Go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm calling this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District's Board of Education to order. Secretary, please call role.
Member Ryan.
Here.
Member Pritchett.
Here.
Member Minnick.
Here.
Member Morowski.
Here.
Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Vang.
Here.
Member Wu.
It looks like Board Member Wu is still trying to connect. We're moving on to item 4.1, the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Superintendent Aguilar.
Thank you. Please stand. Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item 4.2, our broadcast statement, which will be read by Board Member Shake.
Good evening, Area 1. This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Friday, October 16th at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday, October 18th at 9:00 p.m. And also webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments, which are posted on our website, or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public were also provided the opportunity to speak to the board during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting submitted a speaker form by noon today and were sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda.
Thank you, Student Board Member Shake. Item 4.3, COVID Cares Recognition. This is a new addition to our board agenda. I am pleased to say that an active parent volunteer and appointee to the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee, Katie Ann Wilson, as an effort to help build morale and recognize the extraordinary efforts of our teachers, of our staff, of our site administrators, and of our staff at CERN, launched an initiative to call upon community members to nominate and shout out to those heroes in the field through crisis learning, distance learning efforts. So tonight, we have our first list of COVID cares heroes, and we'll be recognizing them by reading out their names. Again, I want to thank Katie Ann Wilson for taking the initiative to gather this and put out this call for positive energy to recognize the extraordinary exemplary efforts of educators across the district in these very difficult times. Katie, in addition to being in LCAP PAC, is a social worker whose husband teaches in a neighboring district. So for our first list of those who are being recognized, we have Mrs. Summers, we have Mr. Adams, we have Mrs. Adams, we have Mr. Repas, we have Mrs. Julie Del Agua, we have Ms. McAfee, we have Ms. Amiaco, we have Mr. McCord, we have Mrs. Butler, we have Mr. Chapa, we have Ms. Warren, we have Ms. Harris, we have Mr. White, we have Ms. Nazari, we have the entire staff and all of the support team at Phoebe Hurst, we have Mrs. Watson, Mrs. Butterfield, Mrs. Cooperman, Mrs. Gorina, we have Christina Tahara, we have Mrs. Henrickson, we have Mrs. Norris, Ms. O'Neil, Ms. Gaynor, Mr. Celeste, Mrs. Sidley, Mr. Merrilldi, Mrs. Merrilldi, Mr. Moore, Ms. Harms, we have Coach A, Coach Ferrara, Ms. Nim, Ms. Botner, Mrs. Saxton, we have JD Ponse, we have Mrs. Joseph, we have Mrs. Graves, we have Mr. Johnston, we have Mr. Garanadas, we have Ms. Egan, we have Ms. Wong, we have Mr. Perry, Mr. Douglas, we have Ms. Cortez, we have Ms. Katz, we have Mrs. I, we have Mrs. Winchester, we have Mr. Reyes, Mr. Wakefield, Mrs. Eve, Ms. Thomas, Ms. Poyo, Ms. Winston, Ms. Hunchkins, the entire staff at Golden Empire, Principal Kirkland, Ms. Singley, Ms. Fouchard, Ms. Fleming, Mr. Briscoe, Mr. Washington, Ms. Bump, Ms. Brown, John and Michael Nye, we have Mrs. Lofton, we have Ms. Mayer, we have Ms. DeFreeze Ferris, we have Ms. Grimes, we have Mr. McGill, we have Ms. Martinez, we have Ms. Green, we have Ms. Melman, we have Ms. Power, we have Mrs. Long, we have the entire amazing staff at Oak Ridge, we have Principal Rileri, we have Assistant Principal Wilson, Mrs. Minami, Ms. Miller, Ms. Coronado, Ms. Davis, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Bowser, Mr. Lum, Ms. Monterra, Ms. Lilly, we have Principal Amerine, Mr. Schmelzer, Principal Carlson, Ms. Paula, we have Mr. Yu, Ms. Tech, Ms. Wang, Ms. Mora, Ms. Lee, Mrs. Riffle, Mrs. Figueroa, Mrs. Brown, Ms. Harris, Ms. Hill. And finally, we have shout-outs to amazing schools that are not represented with educators on this list, like the Met and Sam Brannon, but we're hoping to add to the list in the coming weeks and months at board meetings. So I want to again thank all of the extraordinary staff that are part of our MVP COVID Cares Recognition. We'll be posting those names as we continue to give shout-out in the coming weeks and months. Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
I haven't, Madam President, but the Superintendent does.
Thank you, Mr. Behrens. I am very pleased, this evening, Board members and community members, to announce that the board, by unanimous vote, approved the appointment of Dr. Sadie Hedegaard as our new Assistant Superintendent in Special Education, Innovation, and Learning. Congratulations, Ms. Hedegaard. We look forward to you joining our SAC City Unified Family very soon.
Congratulations. We're excited to have this critical position filled. Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. Do we have a motion? Oh. Second. Student Preferential Vote?
Aye.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7.1, Resolution Number 3171, and we do have one amendment to that resolution. I just want to make sure the cover sheet and the resolution itself actually have different titles. We're going to just motion to amend the cover sheet to reflect the resolution title, which is Recognition of the Rights of Students with Disabilities to Equality and Inclusive Education.
Still move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Preferential Vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
It should be a roll call vote, please.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Member Ryan?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Okay. I think many who are joining us tonight know that this is Dyslexia Awareness Month. Tonight, we have a comprehensive resolution, not just recognizing October as Dyslexia Awareness Month, but really taking it a step further and looking at the rights of students with disabilities, their right to equality and inclusive education. We're proud this evening to have two of our active members of the Coalition for Students with Disabilities on the line, Renee Webster-Hawkins and Sarah Williams Kingsley. Instead of reading the resolution myself, I will be presenting the resolution to the two of them and provide an opportunity for them to make comment. Ms. Williams Kingsley and Ms. Webster-Hawkins? Are they let into the room? No? Okay. Well, the best-laid plans sometimes in virtual settings do not work out. My apologies to both--
President, President Ryan, they did submit a group public comment on this item from Sarah Williams Kingsley, Renee Webster-Hawkins, Angie Sutherland, and Angel Garcia.
Okay. And can you just make sure we can read the comment, but I do know that they had both hoped to be able to provide real-time comments. So can we just make sure that there's no one in the waitroom and then please, by all means, proceed with reading the comment?
Okay. Well, I don't see any attendees. Let me check one other. Vince, do you see anything in the-- no, no, they're not in the list tonight.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ann. Go ahead.
The comment is, "Dare Superintendent and Members of the Board, this month celebrates National Disability History Month, National Bullying Prevention Month, Worldwide Dyslexia Awareness Month, National Learning Disabilities Awareness Month, and National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Thank you for approving this important resolution, recognizing the rights of students with disabilities to equality and inclusive education. In SCUSD, students with disabilities make up approximately 15% of students. Despite the affirmative rights and appreciation for students with disabilities in our federal and state laws, students with disabilities suffer the worst academic and social, emotional outcomes in our district, especially students of color and English language learners. The Coalition for Students with Disabilities appreciates the district's belief that our students with disabilities are general education students first, and that every educational, operational, and budget decision we make needs to begin with the belief that students with disabilities have a right to and have the ability to learn alongside their non-disabled peers and equitable and meaningful opportunities to learn and grow. We appreciate that the Board of Education and SCUSD remain committed to working towards equitable outcomes for students with disabilities and supporting a vision of high expectations for all students and a commitment to learning goals, standards, interventions, and supports that are strong, clear, understood, and put into practice. This can only be achieved by putting students first. Moving forward, the Coalition asks the board to present an update on the implementation of the newly implemented Sunday Curriculum to address dyslexia and related language-based learning disabilities. How many students are receiving services using the curriculum? In addition, how are the district's responsibilities for child find being met during distance learning? In addition, the Coalition requests that there be a board presentation on school climate with updated data on school discipline, bullying prevention and intervention, mental health supports, social and emotional learning, inclusive practices, and the school climate collaborative, and a report on the efforts of the district since the last presentation on school climate."
Thank you, Ann. And since we don't have Renee Webster-Hawkins and Sarah Williams Kingsley here, what I will do is, rather than read the whole resolution, I'm just going to read four bullets and we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote to adopt. Whereas the Board of Education and SCUSD recognize that our students with disabilities are general education students first, and that every educational, operational, and budget decision we make begins with the belief that students with disabilities have a right to and have the ability to learn alongside their non-disabled peers and equitable and meaningful opportunities to learn and grow. Whereas the Board of Education and SCUSD recognize that school climate refers to the norms, values, and expectations that support people to feel physically, socially, and emotionally safe and connected. To be their best, students must feel a sense of connectedness and belonging to their school communities, specifically schools that are committed to promoting a variety of positive relationships with caring adults that will have more connected and engaged students with disabilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and SCUSD remain committed to work towards equitable outcomes for students with disabilities and supports a vision of high expectations for all students and a commitment to learning goals, standards, interventions, and supports that are strong, clear, understood, and put into practice. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and SCUSD value and support diversity and inclusion and recognize both the legal right to and the reciprocal benefit of inclusive education. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and SCUSD remain committed to ensuring the implementation and efficacy of a multi-tiered system of support, including an early identification and an early intervention system to identify and document interventions that students whose performance and/or progress indicates they are at risk for behavior, attendance, and/or course performance. And finally, now therefore be it resolved that the Superintendent transmit copies of this resolution to its administrators, teachers, staff, departments, and schools for appropriate distribution and implementation. We have a motion to adopt the recognition of the rights of students with disabilities to equality and inclusive education resolution.
I will move it. I'll second it.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Board Member Wu. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Roll call vote?
Member Ryan?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you to the Coalition for Students with Disabilities for the work that they put into crafting the resolution. Item 8.0, Public Comment.
We have six requests for live public comment, and we have six written public comments. And the first person to speak publicly is Teresa Hernandez. It looks like her microphone is muted. Teresa, are you there?
I'm not Teresa, this is Annie.
Sorry, no me podía conectar. Me escuchan? Señor Jorge Aguilar, ¿me escucha?
Sí, sí señora, señora. Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes señora Presidenta Jesse, señor Aguilar, Mike, señora Cristina, Alicia, y demás miembros de la mesa directiva. El propósito de este comentario es para decirles a ustedes que urge y es necesario que como cabeza principal de este distrito apoyen y proporcionen los recursos necesarios para que el comité DILAC pueda ejercer libremente el objetivo por el cual ese comité fue creado. Y uno de esos es apoyarlos a ustedes y asesorarlos para que los y hacer sean reclasificados. ¿Van a traducir eso? ¿No hay nadie que lo esté traduciendo?
No, pero señor Hernandez, si quiere yo lo traduzco con mucho gusto.
Okay, entonces, ¿podría traducir eso, por favor?
Claro, claro. Board members, Ms. Hernandez is a community member, and she is asking that we, as a district, provide the supports necessary for our DILAC Advisory Committee to properly function and serve our students, particularly around reclassification needs and reclassifying more English learners.
Ellas han estado trabajando muy fuerte, me consta, pero el mensaje no está siendo transmitido a los padres de dichos estudiantes. ¿Por qué? Porque la mayoría de los asistentes o son personal del distrito o somos las mismas personas de años, y lo cual he reconocido, valorado, porque todos son bienvenidos.
She does acknowledge that our team has been doing a lot of work, but we still have a limited group of individuals who attend sometimes the same families, our staff members as well, and she would like to see more communications as well.
Y si a eso le agregamos que la mayoría o son bilingües o su primer idioma es el español, no están teniendo problemas ellos en entender, pero ¿qué pasa con los padres que no entienden el inglés?
She's asking that for some of our families and students who might be bilingual, they might understand, for example, Spanish, but that there are other families that don't have Spanish or English as their first language.
Ellos se aburren y se enfadan porque la traducción o es mala o solamente se les está traduciendo probablemente un 40%.
And they tend to get frustrated, particularly if translations are not done well, or they are done at a 40% level of accuracy or appropriateness.
Ya es hora de que, en realidad, se ha escuchado la voz de los padres. Yo sé que ahorita tienen muchos problemas, pero créanme que todos los tenemos y hemos aprendido a navegar con ellos.
And she believes that it's time for us to meet the needs of our families. She acknowledges that we have a lot of challenges, but she is asking that we properly respond to the needs of our DILAC participants.
Además, no sé, creo que lo que estoy pidiendo no es para que se salgan del presupuesto, porque yo no estoy pidiendo un privilegio, se está pidiendo algo que por ley se merece este comité.
She feels that what she's asking for is something that we're legally bound to provide to our advisory committee, not a burden on our budget.
¿Qué es lo que necesitamos? Necesitamos traductores culturalmente calificados para cada población del distrito y que los oficiales del comité tengan toda la información de los representantes de cada escuela.
She's asking for translation services to be provided by individuals that are culturally and linguistically sensitive to the populations that we serve in SAC City Unified as well.
Yo hoy hice mi trabajo, no me corresponde, pero como comunidad, no quiero que este comité caiga. Así es de que hoy les toca a ustedes trabajar. ¿Cómo a ustedes les corresponde ver que en cada escuela de su área se esté colaborando con el ELAC?
She feels that she's done her job as a community member, but encourages us to do everything we can so that DILAC as an advisory can succeed, and also encourages--
I don't think that--
encourages each of you to do everything you can to make sure that each of our school ELACs are properly represented in our DILAC committee meetings as well.
También nos gustaría tener una reunión con ustedes para explicarles paso por paso qué es, dónde se está fallando.
She's also requesting a meeting with our Board of Education trustees so that they can break down and explain processes that aren't functioning well.
Señora Jesse, esto no quede en que vamos a ver o vamos a ver más adelante. No, que esto se resuelva ya, porque se ha estado luchando por eso, y no es justo, no es justo que este comité se pierda. Mike, te pido tu apoyo también, señor Aguilar, también a usted le pido su apoyo, señor Pritchett, Alicia, ha estado ahí, se ha dado cuenta de los problemas.
She's asking each of us, you as board members, me as superintendent, not to consider this as something that needs to be studied, but that we take action and try to resolve this so that DILAC can succeed.
Lo que sintieron ustedes de recibir de segunda mano la información es lo que sentimos todos los que no hablamos inglés. El sentimiento, la emoción, no se transmite así.
As you're receiving some of this, some of her words through my translations, sort of second-hand, and anything that you might feel, any of the gaps that you might feel or holes that you feel because you can't communicate with her directly is how families and parents also feel when translation services are not appropriate or accurate.
Ustedes tienen, la mayoría de ustedes tienen mi correo. Comuníquense, por favor, porque no quiero que esto sea, este tiempo se ha perdido. Gracias.
Please feel free to communicate with me directly. You have my email so that we can work on a resolution. Thank you.
Gracias, señor Aguilar, por la traducción. Buenas noches, sin gusto verlos a todos.
Muchas gracias, thank you.
Muchas gracias, Teresa. Superintendent Aguilar, I know we won't respond to public comments, but I do think, you know, the irony is not lost on me that the best translation we've had has come from you, and how do we ensure that all of our translation reflects that same level of knowledge? Moving forward for board meetings, I think that that's a critical question that we must answer. Ann, please go ahead and proceed.
Our next public live commenter is from Shanna Just. Ms. Just, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. So I had submitted a written comment just because I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to make it in person, but I'm glad that I have. So Superintendent Aguilar, Board President Ryan, and board members. So my name is Shanna Just, and I'm the science teacher at Luther Burbank High School, as well as the co-departmentment chair. So the item that I'm speaking to actually isn't available for public comment during the item because it's on the consent agenda. It's item 11.8, the Staples Furniture Purchase for the Luther Burbank High School Science Lab using major Q funds. And I know you should have received a detailed email from me on this issue, because I knew my time would be limited during public comment. So I am urging you to either pull or to not approve the proposed purchase of furniture for the Burbank Science classrooms. Neither the Burbank Science teachers nor the site administration supports this purchase. This is not what we as a site have spent since September 21st, 2017, so over three years working on. This is a plan being pushed through by facilities over the loud and vociferous objections of Luther Burbank High School. Moving forward, with this furniture purchase will result in millions of taxpayer dollars, tens of millions of taxpayer dollars, actually, having been spent only to result in Burbank Caving Science classrooms that, while newer and prettier, are less effective and less safe as both instructional and lab spaces for both teachers and as learning spaces for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanna.
Our next live comment is from Rich Vasquez.
Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, President Ryan, members of the board. Again, appreciate the opportunity to comment. I want to comment on what Ms. Hernandez, Teresa, was commenting about. I attended the last couple of DILAC meetings, and there's been a need for translation. Look at how she just spoke. I mean, I'm not bilingual, and it's tough to understand, right? I can't understand her language, so again, flip-flop that. That's the same way these families are feeling. Even myself, I'm at Hiram Johnson, 600-plus English learners. I'm telling my families, people, I can't communicate great with them, but I'm saying, hey, we got to get up to these DILACs, we got to get to these ELACs, we got to be represented. So I'm telling these parents to go there, and you don't even have translation. They're looking, what do you think they're looking at me like? Look at this fool. He's sending us up here, and there ain't even no one here to speak to us. So again, when you talk about your district's a safe haven school district, how is that a safe haven? There's nobody that can speak their languages. This is a continuous problem. 30% are ELs at Hiram Johnson. It's almost the same throughout the district. Why don't we have a hold of this? There's 60 sites that have 21 or more ELs in the district, so you're mandated to have an ELAC at the September DILAC meeting. We only had 11 people. We couldn't make a quorum. Why is this this way? I mean, ELAC, DILAC, all this stuff's been around for a while. 35 sites have 15 or more percent English learners, so you're mandated to have translations. Why don't we have this stuff? We're not going to get no success with these populations because we're not servicing them correctly. And again, like you said, we're trying to reclassify even at Hiram Johnson. I'm hearing a lot of reclassification at Level 3 or whatnot. We're not pushing through. How can we even think about reclassification when we don't even have translation services? Right? We need to get this stuff together. I'm going to keep hounding on it. Again, also, Hiram Johnson, we're at the last year of a school improvement grant. How much have we approved over there for the school improvement grant with the budget? Just $3.5 million right now. For the school improvement grant with the budget, just 3.5 million right now. Next year with no school improvement grants, 1.3 million. How are we going to even get toward any successes? With the school improvement grant, we're funding our college and career standard, part of our principal, our nurse, so much more things on campus. We need to, I want to know how we're going to move forward with that because that's on my mind and stressing out as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez.
Our next public commenter is Amanda Connolly.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I recently learned, actually just a few hours ago, that it is not necessarily the board that is in the negotiations with the labor partners. So for any and all incorrect assumptions of power or the ability to act at all, I apologize. I'm a mother of three in SCUSD, one in special education, and I am asking everyone involved to let the home health instruction students receive their in-home therapies and services since they don't even have the option of returning to a classroom, no matter what district decides eventually. And I'd like to just say to my fellow parents, we have to prepare to be on our own. The SCTA has no reason to give anything to help our situation, and the district has no power to make the fiscal changes necessary to avoid receivership other than reducing serviceage, which is already happening. I am being given training by my medical provider to be my daughter's speech therapist and ABA specialist because even they cannot provide full and regular services for her. So I would just appeal again to my fellow parents. Let's try to support one another as we can and get to know each other through the connection of our kids in their classroom as we're able to, you know? Just let's talk to our teachers, see what we can do to make this all a little less lonely and a little less scary. But I think ultimately, we and our children will make it through this, even if the district does not. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Connolly.
We have two additional people that requested to speak publicly, but I don't see them in the list. Their names were Kay Stefan and Myra Telez. So I'll go ahead with the written comment.
And is this where we will be reading SCTA's comments as well?
Yes.
Okay. So for our SCTA written comments, in accordance with Article 18.12 of the Collecting Bargaining Agreement, SCTA intends to discuss its report up to 15 minutes on district budget transparency and COVID exposures, distance learning, reopening of schools, and conflict of interests.
Okay. The first public comment is from Junior Gores and says, "Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, President Ryan, and board members. I see myself as an ally to this district. Why wouldn't I? This district will lay down fundamental skills along with parenting for my kids' adult life. What I am troubled by is that why do simple, common sense actions seem so impossible to accomplish by the district? Here is what I mean. As a member of D-LAC, we have committee members that require language translation to make suggestions to the district to serve our EL students. For two months, we have had no Spanish interpreters. Why does this happen? How can something so obvious be missed? If we as parents can't get the tools, what is going on in the classroom? I do apologize, board members, but this is unacceptable. I expect this situation to be rectified immediately, or I can assure you, we, D-LAC, will organize and apply a parent lobby bigger than this district has ever seen. While I take no pleasure in issuing these type of statements to my child's district, I will not sit idle while adults charged with these duties not do their jobs. My committee's loyalties are to our students, especially the vulnerable as EL students. I am beyond frustrated and would like nothing more to make positive comments about SUSD. As I know many in our district are dedicated staff, but we must do better. We have no choice. Thank you again for your labor for our children."
Thank you, Junior.
Next public comment is from Tara Thronson and says, "Our district is facing many complex challenges. No distance learning MOU, a widening opportunity gap. No agree-upon plan for in-person learning such that teachers, staff, and students can return safely if public health metrics allow. A well-documented structural deficit. Parents can't solve the problems facing our district. We are counting on our decision-makers, our district leadership, and the union leaders to work collaboratively towards solutions that serve our students. Number one, our leaders must meet regularly, at least twice per week, to agree to a distance learning MOU and develop a safe return-to-campus plan option for those who desperately need it. Two, our leaders must meet regularly, at least weekly, to negotiate financial savings to eliminate the structural deficit. Three, our district must present at the November 5th board meeting fiscal savings that can be achieved without the bargaining unit. Our children's education can no longer wait. We can't give up on the more than 40,000 students served by SUSD. We need the adult decision-makers to work together." The next public comment is from Cassandra Jennings and says, "This is a tough season for us all in the midst of an unprecedented pandemic that none of us could have predicted. We must deal with health and deaths, closed businesses, loss of jobs and wages, violence in our communities, closed facilities, distance learning, digital divide, and social and civic unrest. Please don't create another pandemic, a learning pandemic that threatens the support and success of 40,000 students, their families, and the communities they live in. We can do better. We are calling for the teachers' union and the district to come to the table together immediately and stay there until we have a plan as to how we will, together, to address distance learning, how we will, together, stop a state takeover, and most importantly, how we will, together, help our children thrive through these tough times and beyond. Black and Brown's kids were already disproportionately suffering from a lack of access, education, support, and high achievement. The problem has been exacerbated with the pandemic. This is not something that can be solved through the media. We must come together. Let's do right by our children. We are calling on the teachers' union and the district to come together to educate and uplift our children." The next public comment is from Daniel Conway and says, "Dear Superintendent and members of the board, the Save Our Students Coalition is composed of families, community groups, and businesses in the Sacramento region who care deeply about the future of SUSD. We demand the leaders of Sacramento City Unified School District and Sacramento City Teachers Association start meeting immediately to address the district's list of urgent issues impacting our students and community. Specifically, number one, meet at least two times per week to jointly develop a safe and responsible return to campus plan and distance learning plan. We shouldn't rush back to in-person, but must have a plan for those who desperately need it. Immediately submit a plan for in-person special education assessment. Two, meet weekly to negotiate savings to eliminate our structural deficit, not just avoid receivership, get out of this cycle. Three, district present at the November 5th board meeting fiscal savings that can be achieved without bargaining units. At a minimum, start with the FICMAT recommendations. Recent failures include failure to develop a distance learning agreement. Here we are in California's capital city where SUSD is the only district in the state with no distance learning agreement. We understand that the Public Employees Relation Board, HERB, still has not appointed a fact finder, while SUSD has been in school for over six weeks without an agreement. Failure to plan how to responsibly return to campus. Now that Sacramento County has moved to a level which allows students to return to school for in-person learning, SUSD and teachers' union leaders should be partnering on a plan to begin to responsibly and safely return to campus those who distance learning isn't working. We must have a plan to bring back our English learners, homeless, special education, and foster kids. Learning hubs are a start, but not enough, only 240, especially when there are over 7,000 special education kids in the district. Failure to avoid state takeover. The constant looming threat of state takeover is destructive to the entire community and our kids. The district's uncertain future has already led families and teachers to flee the district. Failure to adequately educate all students. Year after year, we are confronted with data and studies that show how our school system is failing thousands of kids every year. From special education to suspensions and discipline, these kids continue to fall through the cracks if we are not all working together. It's time the leaders of our local schools set aside their differences for the sake of our kids and our community. Our leaders are failing our kids. They are failing to collaborate and failing to provide the leadership our students deserve. Our kids are educators, and this city deserves better. Sincerely, Greater Sacramento Urban League, Region Business, Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, United Professional Educators, Teamsters Local 150, and Sacramento Association of Realtors." And the next public comment is from Sarah Kingsley and says, "Dear Superintendent and members of the board, since October celebration brings awareness to a variety of national disability issues and needs, the Coalition for Students with Disabilities is sharing resources for SUSD students, staff, and families. National Bullying Prevention Month, Unit Day, October 21st. Join Pacer and wear and share orange to prevent childhood bullying and unite for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Come together in one giant orange message of hope and support. Wear and share orange to color our nation and even the world, visibly showing that our society believes bullying should never be a part of childhood. And visit the Pacer website page for more info. Disability History Week. Disability History Week is the second week of October, as passed by the legislature in 2010, and is about educating youth with and without disabilities on the many contributions people with disabilities have made throughout American history. World Mental Health Day." And she gives information and a website for World Mental Health Day. National Disability Employment Month. Increasing access and opportunities, celebrating 30 years of the Americans with Disabilities Act and 75 years of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And she gives a web address. Building a Future That Works Virtual Celebration, Tuesday, October 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And that has to do, this all has to do with National Disabilities Employment Month, it looks like. And these comments, of course, have been uploaded to our website. The next public comment and final public comment is from David Fisher of SCTA. And says, "Good evening, I'm David Fisher, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. Last Friday, October 9, 2020, SCTA, along with the Natomas Teachers Association and the Twin Rivers United Educators, wrote to the superintendents of SAC City Unified, Natomas Unified, and Twin Rivers Unified, as well as Dave Gordon of the Sacramento County Office of Education, about our concern regarding the safety of students and staff if in-person classes resume before the end of this calendar year." Excuse me. In our letter, the teachers from the three school districts expressed a unified position. Educational equity is tied to health equity. We must ensure that there is COVID-19, excuse me, health equity in all neighborhoods and places across our county before schools return to in-person instruction. Grave health inequities exist related to COVID-19. A disproportionate number of people of color are getting sick and dying from COVID-19. A simple scan of ZIP codes across our county shows how the virus has a devastating impact on low-income neighborhoods and communities of color. Community COVID-19 conditions must be steadily low in all ZIP codes and with the necessary public health preparedness in place. When some get a head start, it deepens inequality and the rush to open schools with high background transmission rates places unsafe pressure on low-income communities and our most under-resourced public schools." End of quote. We still have not received a response. On Tuesday, October 13, we held a negotiating session with the district, and our concerns about a premature resumption of in-person instruction were reinforced. Despite our best efforts to obtain information, SUSD has been neither timely nor transparent in providing information regarding the spread of COVID within SUSD. The district has dragged its feet on the number of employees who have tested positive and has yet to provide information on the number of employees who have been quarantined. The district has not implemented a comprehensive contact tracing protocol, has given no indication of its ability to provide COVID testing to students and staff, and has provided no detailed information regarding the installation and replacement of school site filtration systems. The district wasn't able to answer our basic questions on these matters. The superintendent was not part of the negotiations. Neither was the Director of Health Services or the Chief of Operations. At the same bargaining session, we requested the participation of the Chief Business Officer so that we could get answers to our numerous questions about the budget, including a more detailed explanation of the district's 2019-20, 23 million surplus. We also wanted to discuss the district's choice to park 101.3 million in its books and supplies budget, tens of millions that the district will not spend on books and supplies. When the district included the CBO on its bargaining team in June, she was able to clarify a number of matters, including her confirmation of the district's eight-year trend of projecting deficits that in all but one year, 2017-18, resulted in surpluses, in some case, massive surpluses. For the record, the deficit in 2017-18 was the result of the disastrous 6-million-vacation buyout for top administrators, increase in the number of administrative staff, and the implementation of a poorly planned and executed summer school program. Like the superintendent, the CBO was not present at our bargaining meeting, but the district committed to including her the next time we meet. Unfortunately, the district's team was not prepared to bargain. Despite another commitment from the superintendent that the district's team would be responding to the contract proposals that SCTA made on June 9, 2020, the district had no response. No response on our proposal regarding restorative practices. No response on our proposal regarding the implementation of multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. No response on our proposal on safety for staff in this pandemic. No response to our proposal to recruit and retain language, speech, and hearing specialists, a proposal we made to the district in December 2019. Even more troubling was the district's unpreparedness to discuss the possibility of conducting one-on-one, in-person special education assessment. The district's team stated that it wanted to discuss it. We agreed and asked if the district had a proposal. They did not. Until last night at 9:16 p.m., when the superintendent, who has never been at negotiations, emailed us a proposal related to in-person special education assessment. The district's haphazard handling of this critical issue regarding some of the district's most vulnerable students is indicative of this administration and this board's unwillingness to provide the leadership necessary to address special education in SUSD. This leadership has done little to implement the recommendations from 2017 of the Council of Great City Schools regarding its special education. Since July 1, 2017, the percentage of students with special needs has increased to 17%, approximately five percentage points higher than the statewide average. Anyone who deals with special education knows there has been a leadership crisis in the department for years, an issue that has reached an absolute critical stage in the last year with no credible response. Instead, Chief Academic Officer Christine Baita and outgoing Special Education Director Becky Bryant continually try to blame a lack of an agreement with the SCTA for their own leadership failures. In August and September, a large number of special education teachers met in work groups with Ms. Baita and the district's bargaining team and proposed in writing a number of specific and concrete steps that could be taken to provide additional support to special needs students, a need that is especially acute in this pandemic. Special education teachers need more assessment toolkit. They need more time to complete the 7,000 revised IEPs that are necessary because the district is in a distance learning instructional model. They need updated software. They need a streamlined method of documenting the services they are providing. They need a streamlined method of documenting the services they are providing to students. The district has approximately 60 million in CARES money. At least a portion of this can be used to address these concerns. And yet, when we met on Tuesday, Ms. Baita could not even articulate a district position on how it proposed to implement in-person assessment, an issue that she stated was of critical importance to the district. It certainly is to SCTA. Rest assured, we are prepared to negotiate with the district over the critical issues that concern special education students. We are reconvening our special education workgroup and will be prepared to meet with the district next week. And if the issue is truly that critical for the district, maybe Superintendent Aguilar could actually participate in the discussion so that he can hear directly from special education teachers and the challenges they face and the dedication they bring to their work here in SUSD. In addition, prior to the last board, last school board meeting, we raised a concern about the apparent conflict of interest with your general counsel, Jerome Behrens. Board President Ryan has not responded to our letter, although we did see that contract in question and several others related to after-school services was pulled from the consent agenda. We were very surprised to learn when this issue was brought up in bargaining that the district confirmed that those contractors are, in fact, already providing services to the district according to the terms and conditions of the contract, even though those contracts have not been approved by the board. Is that the way this district operates? Implement contracts valued at more than 1.3 million where there are serious issues raised about conflict of interest and without board approval. And it's ironic that tonight, also on the consent agenda, which means it will likely pass with no discussion, the district is revising its conflict of interest policy. The most significant change in the policy appears to be to allow district staff like the superintendent to obtain outside employment. Additionally, the policy appears to rely on the district's general counsel to provide oversight and guidance regarding the application of the policy, in this case, an individual about whom conflict of interest issues have been raised. We would request that this matter be pulled from the consent agenda so that the public has an opportunity to discuss the issue in more detail, including more transparent and accountable reporting requirement to the policy. Finally, last year, as part of a Public Records Act request, we obtained a text message exchange between Board Member Lisa Marowski and the Sacramento Bee's ethically challenged opinion columnist, Marcos Brayton. Mr. Brayton has a right to provide fawning and obsequious support to the district and expresses unbridled antipathy toward teachers. He does not have a right to threaten elected school board officer officials like he did with Ms. Marowski. The following is a quote from Mr. Brayton's text to Board Member Marowski. "The first person to crack on this current board will be featured prominently in my column." First, did Ms. Marowski report to the full board that she had been threatened by Mr. Brayton? Second, what are you, as an elected body, going to do in response to this threat? Well, we recognize that Mr. Brayton is your ally. Surely you don't support an opinion writer threatening to use his column as a way to browbeat you and other elected officials to carry out his own political agenda, even if it matches your own? That's the last public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Moretti. Item 9.0, Public Hearing and Approval. Item 9.1, Public Hearing and Approval of Resolution Number 3169, Compliance with the Public Textbook and Instructional Materials Incentive Program Act. Matt Turkey will be presenting.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board. My name is Matt Turkey, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. And tonight, I am here to report on the district's compliance with the pupil, in, with the Pupil Textbook and Instructional Program Act, or ED Code 60119. Next slide, please. Education Code 60119 requires that by the eighth week of school, we have a public hearing to certify that all students have sufficient textbooks or instructional materials that are consistent with the content and cycles of curriculum frameworks adopted by the State Board of Education in the core subject areas, including English Language Arts, History Social Studies, Math, Science, Foreign Languages, Health, and Laboratory Science Equipment applicable to science lab courses. This year, during distance learning, all students need to have an electronic device and internet access to access digital materials. Next slide, please. Due to distance learn, oh, the steps we have taken to ensure sufficiency include an initial survey of sites to determine their textbook and instructional materials needs. Redistribution of surplus textbooks and ordering of additional textbooks is needed, including the replacement of lost or damaged materials. Due to distance learning, we have also purchased digital access to materials, if at all possible. Schools have made sure that students who need a device were issued one and that all students had internet access. In the past, SCOE would visit schools to verify sufficiency. However, this year, instead, SCOE required that principals self-certify sufficiency of instructional materials, electronic devices, and internet access for each student. Next slide, please. Resolution 3169 certifies that sufficient textbooks, instructional materials, electronic devices, and internet access were provided to each student at all school sites, and that each school has sufficient laboratory equipment. And next slide, please. This slide outlines, outlines the sufficiency status for each school serving grades K through six. All schools have sufficient materials. Next slide, please. And this slide outlines the sufficiency for each school serving grade level seven through eight, and all schools have sufficient materials. And then finally, this slide has all of our high schools, grades nine through 12, and each of our high schools have sufficient materials. And next slide. And that concludes this presentation with the recommendation of the approval of Resolution
Do we have public comments on this item?
Yes, we do. We have one submitted. One person, Elizabeth Villanueva, wanted to speak in person, but I don't see her name on the list, so I will go to the four written comments. And the first one is from Tracy Fleming and says, Our district has been using the same Spanish textbook for over 20 years now. This is clearly extremely outdated and inadequate for the students of today. It is imperative that we adopt a new textbook for Spanish language learning as soon as possible. And the next comment is from Allison French-Toubau and says, On this topic, it is good news to hear that all school sites reported their students having books and devices and internet access. It would be good to hear specifics about hotspots. A year ago, the idea of anything close to one-to-one ratios of students and devices, devices seemed so far away for SUSD, but now seems possible. Would like to know how the pandemic and CARES funds will impact SUSD's text and technology implementation going forward. And the next comment is from Junior Goris and says, After reading this memo and with some guidance, I was shocked that only three sentences spoke about the current educational setting. While it's wonderful that the district was able to get much-needed Chromebooks in the hands of needing students, the devices are useless if there are still pending connectivity problems. I believe the district has still much more work ahead in trying to adapt to the new educational reality and support gap of students. We are not at 100% yet, and I respectfully request that the district tackle the connectivity issues before passing this resolution. Thank you all again for your labor for our children. And the last comment is from Leanna Sanchez and says, The allocation earmarked for instructional materials was not expended in compliance with the Pupil Textbook and Instructional Materials Incentive Act. The Spanish world language materials are not consistent with content and cycles of the curriculum framework, framework adopted by the State Board of Education in 2009 nor 2019. What is the plan to remedy said insufficiencies within eight weeks from the adoption of the textbook sufficiency resolution? Spanish continues, continues to be included in master schedules with no remedy regarding instructional materials on behalf of the district. At Cal Middle, intro Spanish students are relying on school site council to purchase curriculum. Though Cal Middle students enrolled in Spanish I or Spanish II for high school credit have had access to district-adopted, yet outdated, N-Espanol textbooks and workbooks, their teacher, however, does not have access to instructional materials. Through years of reporting this insufficiency and need, Library Textbook Services Department advised that these materials be purchased through eBay or similar since the instructional materials were now obsolete. If we truly value education and particularly bilingualism as we promote the seal of biliteracy, how does SUSD ensure that students are being equitably prepared for the alignment of world language programming when the structures are not currently in place and the instructional materials are not aligned to content and framework standards adopted by State Board of Education? And that's the last public comment on this item.
Thank you. Do we have any board member comments on this item, questions or comments? It looks like we have none on this item.
President Ryan?
Yes.
Can just interject very quickly. I do want to, as you heard in public comment, there are areas where we need to continue to lean in, but I do also want to take a moment to just thank our staff who, in very short notice, responded to make sure that we could be in front of you with this information. And in particular, as it relates just to the deployment of so much equipment to our students and families, there were just a lot of efforts on behalf of so many individuals that we sometimes don't hear of. And I want to just particularly thank individuals like Sierra Campbell in our Library and Textbook Services. She's a technician. And of course, that is the first place that we have to make sure that, for example, Chromebooks are, are inputted so that we could have the ability to run reports and understand how many have been inventoried and how many have been deployed. And oftentimes, we don't, we don't thank staff members like Sierra, who's doing fantastic work, our IS Chad Switzer, Rhonda Rhodey, Lisa Allen, of course, just countless individuals and departments that had to adapt very quickly to make sure that students had access to curriculum, even though in some cases it was going to look very differently, of course, than, than, than previously. So just wanted to take a moment to thank some of those individuals.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. So this is an item for action this evening. Can we have a motion and a second?
I'll move it.
Second.
Student preferential vote?
Aye.
This will be a roll call vote?
Member Ryan?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Marowski?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
And Member Wu?
Aye.
The motion carries. Moving on to Item 10.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. Item 10.1, Approve the Capitol Heights Academy Material Revision, which will be presented this evening by Jesse Ramos and Vincent Harris. And I believe that our petitioners will have, will also be here to answer questions.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Ramos. Hello to President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and trustees. I will be doing a presentation on resolution and the resolution to do a material revision for the charter of Aspire Capitol Heights Academy. And next slide, please. For tonight's presentation, I'm going to reintroduce the charter review team, talk about the overview of the charter school, the material revision process, the request for additional analysis that was brought up in the July meeting. Legal considerations, next steps in Aspire Heights Academy will have time to present questions, and then hopefully we'll have a board decision. Next slide. So I'd like to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of all the people that participated in the review of the petition. And these are the various individuals. I'd like to thank them for their service. Next slide. So Aspire Capitol Heights Academies, they are requesting that the board authorize the following in the material revision. To relocate its current facility to its new location in 7300 Folsom Boulevard in Sacramento. Also to increase its grade levels from TK5 to TK8. Increase its enrollment from its current operational enrollment, which is its approved enrollment cap of 440 students, to a new operational enrollment of 600 students. Things to consider when reviewing a material revision, the board may consider the following: Whether the petitioners presents a non-sound educational program. The petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program. The petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive description of the essential elements. The charter school is demonstrably unlikely to serve the interests of the entire community. And then the district is not in position to observe the fiscal impact of the charter school. Next slide. Thank you. So this is an overview of Aspire Capitol Heights. It's been in operation for, this is its 17th year. They opened on September 2, 2003. Currently, the C-BEDS report shows it serves 232 students, getting current to fifth grade. It is an independent charter. Material revision was submitted February 18. The charter has a current petition that expires in June 30, 2023. And I showed this slide in July, and these are just some tables from the CASP results. Next slide, please. All right, this slide here shows the enrollment of Aspire Capitol Heights. This data came from the C-BEDS report, which is an annual collection of data for schools that typically happens in October. Since 2016-17 school year, the enrollment for Aspire Capitol Heights has been declining. From 2014-15 to 2019-20, it's moved from 301 to 232. Also, with the time when the charter submitted their material revision in their memorandum in February, it showed that their enrollment declined another 19 students to 213. Next slide, please. And I was asked to look at the student performance for African-American and Black students and Hispanic-Latino. The information comes from the California Assessment of Student Performance, the CASP results, which uses the Smarter Balance. Those assessments are used to measure students' mastery for the Common Core standards for English Language Arts and Math. Overall, for all grade levels, 22.5% of the Black or African-American students met or exceeded the English language literacy standards. This was below Father Keith Kenny, 47.83, but it was better than Bret Hart Elementary's 15%, Oak Ridge Elementary's 22.23, and Tahoe's 14.28. For Hispanic, for Latino students, 33.33% met or exceeded the English Language Arts literacy standards. This was below Father Keith Kenny, 43.84, but it was better than Bret Hart Elementary's 11.59, Oak Ridge Elementary's 16.2, 16.21, and Tahoe Elementary's 28.69. Next slide, please. Overall, for, in mathematics, 15% of the Black or African-American students met or exceeded the mathematics standards. This was below Father Kenny's, again, at 17.32, but it was better than Bret Hart Elementary's 11.43, Oak Ridge Elementary's 10.82, and Tahoe's 8.57. For Hispanic or Latino students, 22.22% met or exceeded the math standards. It was below Father Keith Kenny's at 39.19, but it was better than Bret Hart Elementary's 4.55, and Oak Ridge Elementary's 12, and Tahoe Elementary's 18.95. And next slide, please. And next slide please. Okay, in this slide here, we were attempting to look at, you know, year-to-year growth. This is the results for Black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino, looking at third graders from 2016-17, fourth graders from 2017-18, and fifth grade for 2018-19 for English Language Arts. And this was just an attempt to show some kind of trend. Unfortunately, it does not take into consideration the cohort. So it's, doesn't really compare apples to apples. But this is in the report for both the English Language Arts and Math. And next slide please. Okay, for CHAS material revision, one of the things that we needed to look at was for determining the fiscal impact was its enrollment. CHAS has a plan to increase its enrollment within the next four years from its current enrollment of 213 to 600 students. In its memorandum, its revision, as I mentioned, was 213. But currently, the nonprofit's approved operational enrollment is 440 students, and it will not exceed its approved operational enrollment limit until year three of its plan, when it anticipates having an enrollment of 504 students. You can see in this table here, the first year, it's going to go from 213 to 336. Next year, from 336 to 420. And then in third year, it'll go from 420 to 504, when it will exceed its operational limit by 64 students. And next slide. Okay, now looking at the fiscal impact. We, the staff did three possible scenarios, where 25% of the enrollment came from district schools, 50% of the enrollment came from district schools, and 100% of the enrollment came from district schools. Currently, 68.4% of CHAS student population are SCUSD students. The hope is, from when they move to their new location, that they will be able to recruit from other districts, such as Elk Grove, South Sacramento, and San Juan. They estimate that the increase of added district schools would change the percentage of SCUSD students to as low as 50%. 50% is greater than the low threshold that the 25% that the staff used in their analysis, and less than 100% of what the staff used in its analysis. Make sure I said that right. 50% is greater than the 25% and less than the 100%. Now, the reason the staff did the different scenarios is because enrollment is open to all students. So we did the range of 25, 50, or 100 as benchmark estimators for the fiscal impact of the material revision. You will see on the chart that the fiscal impact starts to happen when the third year, when the operational enrollment exceeds its current operational enrollment of 440, where 25% the fiscal impact would be 102,000. At 100%, it'd be 553,000. And then in year four, it would be 319, a range from 319 to 1,448, when it reaches its full capacity. And next slide please. So we looked at some fiscal considerations, whether it's be a savings in salaries for reduction of teachers needed, whether there could be a limited percentage of students from SCUSD, some feasibility ideas with regards to increasing the rate that they pay for oversight. And also maybe the idea of purchasing services from the district. And also, how does Senate Bill 98 impact revenue loss? Next slide. So looking at the idea of reducing FTE, full-time employees, that would not, based on the information we received from the charter, in order for to reduce the number of teachers, we would need that enrollment recruitment would need to be concentrated by grade level and by school. The enrollment growth seems to be spread out across various grade levels in schools. So there wasn't a concentration to be able to reduce the number of people. Also, the idea of limiting the number of students who attend the charter. The Charter Act states that charter shall admit all students who wish to attend. So we really are not able to consider limiting the number of students that came from Sacramento schools. Next slide. Maybe we, the possibility of increasing the oversight fee from 1% to the maximum 3%. The proposal to increase the rate charged for oversight fees from 1 to 3, it's not recommended. The code, ed code states that the maximum, the 3% charge is, districts may charge that if they are providing basically free rent facilities to the charter. In this case, this is not the case. Purchase, the idea of purchasing services from the district to mitigate the fiscal impact. The fees that the district charges for services rendered to other agencies is, there's really not much of a profit margin. It just covers the cost of those services. So that would not be a viable way to mitigate the the impact. Senate Bill 98 also will not impact the effect of the material revision because Senate Bill 98 was to provide, basically, a safe haven for next year because of the pandemic and the impact it may have with regards to district revenues. And in this case, the fiscal impact in this material revision doesn't take effect till the third year of their rollout. Next slide please. Legal considerations. There is no specific time limit to make a decision on a material revision. Petition to expand a charter may be denied based on the fiscal impact that it would have on the school district. And Stan Resin, the Sacramento County Superintendent, does have the Stan Resin authority and is able to review financial matters. And if he or she is fit, in this case, he, this includes the approval or denial of the charter school's material revision. And next slide please. All right, so next steps is for, make a decision on whether to approve or deny the passage of the resolution for the material revision of the charter for Aspire Capitol Heights Academy. And that's it.
And I know that Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to invite CHA because I think they would like to respond to the presentation. And I think we have Tony and the, Tony is the Assistant Superintendent for Aspire Capital Schools, and Chris Otto, who is the principal for Capitol Heights Academy.
Chris Orr.
Chris Orr. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, go ahead, sir.
Tony, would you like me to start off?
Go for it. Yes, please.
Okay, all right. So thank you guys again for hearing this. I've got a chance to speak in front of the board a few months ago. So I want to remind us just of a couple of things. As a principal, I'm kind of ground floor in seeing what this looks like for young people. And I, it feels like it's the right place to mention something that's kind of already been mentioned in tonight's meeting when we talked about distance learning. I acknowledge that this has been a struggle for educators across the country. I want to highlight the swift and effective practice Aspire Public Schools made. Last spring, within weeks, Aspire Public Schools made a pivot and had teachers providing distance learning very quickly. 100% of our students were given Chromebook devices. All families in need were provided hotspots. There was an internal tech team that supports needs with families. Meal services were provided. Families received a week's worth of breakfast and lunch. And since the spring, we've engaged with educators around the country to provide our teachers with professional development and providing virtual learning. In addition to virtual classes every day, we've adopted our more time model by having students attend virtual small group learning sessions. This is after the normal school day. Our goal remains to close and eliminate the achievement gap. And we have shown that we're willing to go above and beyond for all of our students and families to do that. So again, this is something I think brothers and sisters in education all over are doing. But I'm proud to say Aspire and Capitol Heights has done this effectively and it moves swiftly. The real piece around our, the building is currently our school is a K5 school. That is very unlike most school structures that are usually K6 or K8. Currently, because of the lack of space, our families have have to plan on attending another school. And sometimes that means only for one year before heading to middle school. That's an awkward adjustment for kids and something we don't want to put families through. Aspire has a way to correct this. We've identified another facility that will allow us to serve grades from K all the way to 8. All we need from the district is the revision to be able to do so. In addition, I think the building that Capitol Heights is currently in is in dire need of repair and in some cases beyond repair. And I've seen many school buildings firsthand, and I know there's a lot of educators on this call that can testify to this. We know what it feels like when a kid walks through a hallway in a new and bright and happy environment. We also know what it feels like when a kid walks through an old and I think this is especially noted when those students are students that are brown and black. Racial tensions are high in our country, and I think calling out these inequities is overdue. The message of the board acknowledging the facility disparities, but ignoring the opportunity to provide brown and black children what they so richly deserve will be obvious and hurtful. And again, there is a beautiful building awaiting these students and families. The only thing in the way is your decision. And so I implore you to please, please, please consider this in a good way. Please consider this in the best interest of students and families in our community.
Thank you so much, Mr. Orr. Appreciate it. Hi, y'all. I'm Anthony Salina, Area Superintendent with Aspire Public Schools. And yeah, in 2003, I joined Aspire 17 years ago, and that happened to be the same year that Capitol Heights was first chartered through Sac City. And so we've enjoyed a 17-year partnership. I've grown with Aspire and Aspire has grown within the district. And it's been a great partnership. We were a Blue Ribbon School. We were a California Distinguished School. And I was able to do some digging and I was able to finally find our original petition way back from 2003. And what it shows was, we actually, originally, the design of the school was to have 494 students, K through 12. And I thought that was fascinating. Now, that petition was before we even had a location identified. And so unfortunately, we've now been in the current site for that 17 years and never able to fully fulfill the plans that we had and the design that we had for the site. And so Principal Orr described how important it is that we're able to expand those grade levels and also be able to be closer in proximity to our schools that are chartered through San Juan. So we have Alexander Twilight Secondary Academy, which is on El Camino Avenue. And this new location will about split the distance between those two sites and provide an opportunity for us to recruit students that will be able to stay from kindergarten through 12th grade. And so I appreciate it so much. Thank you so much, Jesse Ramos and the entire staff. That was an extensive report that you filled out. We had plenty of dialogue back and forth between district staff and ourselves. Really also want to extend a thank you to Superintendent Aguilar, President Ryan, trustees. I know this has been a very difficult and long and discussed item. And so I'm so glad to be before you today to finally be able to have a discussion about it and finally get some resolution. One thing that I did want to note that was concerning that I noticed about the staff summary and report in the presentation was the timeline for enrollment ramp up had an error. It showed that our enrollment in 2021 as year one, and obviously that is this current year. So we are not adding any students this current year. So everything that you saw in those projections should be shifted to the right one year. So in fact, the first year that we would be adding enrollment to 336 wouldn't be until the 21-22 school year. Seems material, but that's actually very important when we're talking about this discussion about fiscal and the consideration there because, as was mentioned also, Capitol Heights is up for material revision in, at the end of the 2023 school year. And so in fact, there would be no fiscal impact on the district prior to the, this board again, having another opportunity to discuss the material revision for Capitol Heights Academy. I think it's really important for trustees to note that before we broach that 440 enrollment allowance, we will be back before the board for a renewal. So I think it's very important to discuss. Also, I appreciate the way the district has modeled the fiscal around the different percentages of in-district, out-of-district. I just want to speak to that very briefly, that the location that we're moving to is in a nexus of three districts. So it's Sac City, it is San Juan, and it is Elk Grove, all in a little peninsula. And like I said, we have students currently in the San Juan schools that we would want to stay and continue to matriculate into the high school. And so that's where we are projecting that it's not that we would be limiting in any way students that wanted to sign up for our school, but our goal and desire in our marketing would be more towards those students between the two schools. So yeah, very well, well thought out. The other thing that I thought was very important to note from the district report was that this would not cause the elimination of any staff, especially teaching staff, with our move. And I think that's very important to note because it's a concern right now in these difficult times that no teachers would have to lose their job or no reductions of staff would take place. And in fact, if we were able to contract for services, while indeed that wouldn't create revenue for the district, it could indeed create jobs for the district and/or save jobs that may otherwise be laid off. And so I think that's really important to note that we would want a contract for a janitorial, maintenance, landscaping, security. You'll have many great service providers that you have. These would be represented jobs that we would be able to utilize through a contract with the district. So I think that's also really important to note that we are open and willing and excited to be able to do that and work with the district on that. And then lastly, I think the discussion just around what's right for kids. This is the hardest time any of us have ever experienced. We are all trying to figure this out together. We want a continued partnership. We do not want to damage or hurt the district in any way, but we want to continue to be able to serve our students. And in this building that we've been in for 17 years, that has been around for 70, 80 years, is just no longer suitable for students to inhabit. And so if we are not able to move the school, we could be facing even dire considerations of whether we can even remain at, in operation at all. And so I just want to put that out there too, that this is, in my mind, a life-or-death decision for this school. And so as Principal Orr suggested, we really hope and have the support of the district to find a way to make this work. And with that, I'm here in available, Principal Orr and myself, to answer any questions or just turn it back over to the staff.
Mr. Salina, Mr. Orr, before we take questions, we're actually going to go to public comment per our process. We have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have four individuals that requested to speak live and 20 written public comments. And it looks like we have three of the live public commenter, commenters in the list, and the first is Josiah Green.
So Ann, before we go to the public comments, given the volume of public comments, we'll allow our live public commenters to do two minutes each, and then the remaining written comments will be one minute each.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josiah Demaris Greer. I'm an enrollment coordinator and outreach counselor for the Educational Opportunity Program at Sacramento State. I have been in contact with Principal Orr and his staff in regards to connecting with Aspire School. And I just wanted to urge this board, with some of you probably remember me, I've come in and talked in regards to with BYLP in the past. And I met with President Ryan a couple of times when she's come and done some workshops at Sac State. So it's good to see some familiar faces. But in regards to this, in regards to approving this revision, I want to urge the board to be able to do that or be encouraged to do that. And I want to let you all know that we are at Sacramento State, have been in contact with Principal Orr and his staff and letting them know that we are going to fully support them if they're able to get this type of expansion, especially when we talk about supporting our Black and Brown students. With Sac State opening up its MLK Center recently in the past couple of years, we have our College Assistant Migrant Program, which works with students who are dependents of migrant workers. It's really important for us to be able to establish a good relationship with those students. If you go into, from K to 8, now that gives us as a university more of a reason to be able to go out. It's really difficult to convince the university to spend its funds to talk to students that are in fourth or fifth grade, knowing that they have so much time left to be able, before they're able to actually start thinking about college. But if you're able to extend it into grades like eighth grade, now we can start talking about the importance of A through G, completing those requirements, and talk about how it affects them in the long term. I am a first-generation college student. Again, I work with EOP. We work specifically with first-generation college students and low-income. And many of our staff at Sac State were former EOP students. So when you talk about developing relationships at an early stage and early intervention, Dr. Bettina Love has a book where she mentions specifically that just when people of color have a representation throughout their K through 12 experience, they're more likely to get a college education. So we have an opportunity now to intervene as early as possible for our students of color to be able to create a pathway. And I think that if we get your approval, we'll be able to be successful in doing that. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity and I hope that you would, uh, vote in the right way.
Thank you. Our next public commenter is Jose Bodepo Membah. Are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you very much, uh, Superintendent Aguilar, Chair Ryan, members of the board. My name is Jose Bodepo Membah. I am the Director for Sustainable Communities for SMUD. Um, and again, we are supportive of the material revision. Um, we are in partnership with the Aspire, uh, School, uh, Capitol Heights and are excited about the opportunity to build on that partnership. Um, I would like to read a letter on behalf of our Director of Customer Service, uh, Nicole Howard. Uh, and it states, "SMUD is strongly supportive of the material revision of the Charter for Aspire Public Schools, Capitol Heights Academy in Sacramento. Our purpose is SMUD as a community and utility company is to enhance the quality of life for our customers and community through energy solutions. In addition, one of our key missions is to be a trusted partner with customers in the community. We believe that the partnership with Aspire aligns strongly with our Sustainable Communities initiative and brings equity and closes disparity gap and then focuses on economic vitality in all neighborhoods in our service area with special attention given to historically underserved neighborhoods. As Aspire Capitol Heights Academy serves over 80% African American and Latinx students. And the charter revision represents a reaffirmation that Aspire's commitment to Sacramento underserved, um, and underserved students and a deepening of their investment in the community. There's three key points behind our support. We believe that Sacramento needs an educated workforce with strong ties with the diversity of our community in Sacramento. We believe the exceptional academic performance opportunities by expanding to K to eight will help develop the next generation of our city's leaders and fill that workforce need. Two, we believe Aspire will instill and continue to instill in students the value of giving back by encouraging them to return and connect with colleges as Sacramento State stated and make an impact within our community here locally. We need a community advocate that's successful. Uh, we need community advocates that are successful and are able to matriculate through the system here in Sacramento, and they can contribute back to this region. Lastly, we believe the location is ideal for Aspire's partnership with Sacramento State and will continue to foster college-bound environment at a very young age. Uh, we believe it's critical, a critical component of Aspire's college for certain ethos. So we are excited to see Capitol Heights Academy, um, with this opportunity to flourish. And we ask that you approve this application and allow Aspire Public Schools to continue serving Sacramento community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next, um, public comment is from Kia Williams. Kia, are you there? Uh, it looks like she is no, no longer in the list. Um, our last, um, live comment. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
My name's Kia Williams and I am a parent of twins at Capitol Heights Academy. This is a wonderful school. My twins started in K, uh, TK last year and they were put up to first grade this year. Their reading is amazing. The teachers there are second to none. My only concern. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. We just can't see you.
Shut now. Oh no. Okay, I'm just going to finish talking. The only concern that I have is the actual building itself. It's so old. It's so old. It's so depressing to go downstairs into that tiny, small cafeteria and see all the kids cramped in there. It's sad to see the little playground and not enough space for the kids to go out there and get all their wiggles out. It's sad to see such small classrooms, small classrooms. I volunteer a ton there when the schools were open, so I know firsthand. I would hope and pray that the board please, please approve this. This will be so amazing for these children. It will help them to be better students. It will, it will just be an amazing thing for these kids. So please, please do this. Thank you.
And I think we, go ahead, Anne. We have one more live and then the rest are going to be one minute.
Yes, one minute each. Our, um, last live comment was from Annie Stambaugh, but it looks like she's no longer online, so I will move to the written comments. And the first is from Starlight Murray and says, "Hello, SUSD Board Members. My name is Starlight Murray and I would like to express my full support for item 10.1. I started this journey with Capitol Heights Academy when my son attended from grades two through five. In this time, I was able to see so much growth in my son's academics as well as his social skills with peers. Capitol Heights Academy has been such a positive influence in my child's educational journey that I decided to apply and be part of this amazing school. I have now been employed with Aspire Capitol Heights Academy going on four years. I couldn't be more proud to work with the amazing staff and families of the Oak Park community. This site has been a blessing for so many years to many, and I believe we are more than deserving for this approval. Thank you for your time and consideration." The next comment is from Imos Ogbowi and says, um, that she is in support of this agenda item. The next public comment is from D. Clan, David Clanray and says, "Dear SUSD Board Members, my name is David Clanray, a concerned parent urging you to approve the charter revision of Capitol Heights Academy. We have outgrown our current facility and need to expand. I stand with our schools, faculty and principal, quote, 'All kids deserve great schools,' unquote. Thank you for your time and consideration." And the next comment is from Lauren Loomis and says, "Dear Sacramento Unified School Board Members, I am writing in support of Aspire Capitol Heights Academy request to move to a new school site. Since the 2012, 2013 school year, I've had the privilege to engage with what I consider a very special student body and dedicated team of educators at Capitol Heights Academy as their school counselor. As I am sure you are aware, the student body at Capitol Heights Academy is nearly 100% comprised of students and families of color, a majority of whom identify as African American and Latina. Making the move to the proposed new school site will be a huge step forward in closing the opportunity gap that our students face each day within the educational, education system. A new facility will provide our students with the ideal environment to learn while giving our students extra resources they have not been able to access. Additionally, it will allow Aspire Public Schools to provide us with more resources that our current school site does not have the capacity to support." The next comment is from Demetia Coleman and says, "Good morning. I am a teacher at Capitol Heights Elementary. I also live in the community in which I work. I am in support of moving to a new campus. This move will provide adequate space and accommodations for our students, their families and our staff." And the next comment is from Janice Hernandez Gutierrez and says, "Dear SUSD Board Members, the reason for this email is in support of relocating Aspire Capitol Heights Academy. My name is Janice Hernandez Gutierrez. I am a Sacramento native and I am a proud after-school educator at CHA. Aspire serves over 80% black and Latino students. As a member of this community that was born and raised in Oak Park, I have witnessed firsthand the need for resources in my community to support black and Latino students. At Aspire, we provide our students with the resources necessary to be successful, not only in school, but also in life. Aspire has always kept students' best interests at heart, and this move is a perfect example. Moving locations will allow us to help more families give their scholars the opportunity to receive an equitable education. At Aspire, we give each child the necessary tools and resources to be successful and to know college is for certain." And the next comment is from Madison Hebert and says, "I strongly support the material revision of Aspire Capitol Heights Academy and firmly believe our scholars deserve your consideration. Above all else, kids come first." Um, oh, and her message continues and says, "My name is Madison Hebert and I am a Dean of Instruction up in Sacramento. I taught for four years at Aspire Apex Academy in Stockton, and the community is near and dear to my heart. I was so excited about the opening of two new schools to serve more students in this area, knowing the need for quality education. Our students deserve that and so much more. It is heartbreaking to me to think that you would take that opportunity away from the community, especially when it was already voted on seven to zero. Aspire has worked diligently to hire for both schools and to set up hundreds of students for success and give them an opportunity to obtain an excellent education. There are already students enrolled. It is absurd to me to think that our education system would grant such a huge project like this and then rescind." And the next comment is from Lynette Hayden and says, "Dear Board Trustees, I, as an employee of Aspire Charter Schools, am strongly supportive of the material revision of the Charter for Aspire Public Schools, Capitol Heights Academy in Sacramento. As an organization that serves over 80% black and Latino students, the charter revision request represents a reaffirmation of Aspire's commitment to Sacramento's underserved students and a deepening of their investment into our community. I support the charter revision for a number of reasons. Sacramento needs an educated workforce with strong ties to our community. The exceptional academic performance of, of Capitol Heights Academy will help develop the next generation of our city's leaders. Aspire instills in its students the value of giving back by encouraging them to return home after college to make an impact in one's community. We need community advocates that are successful to and through college so that they can contribute to future generations in Sacramento." And the next public comment is from Kayla Green and it says, "Greetings, Sac USD. I am writing this email in support of Capitol Heights Academy moving to a new facility. I have worked at CHA for two years and a new facility would greatly improve the learning experience for our students. One reason is because our current facility has temperature control issues and is years behind in available technology slash systems, which negatively affects our students' focus during school. Another reason is because we are currently sharing a campus with a church and this limits the types of resources and events we can provide for our community and families. Finally, I support this move because I know a better facility would make it easier for me to teach. I won't have to, I won't have to stop the flow to troubleshoot during our lessons and student engagement would increase. Thank you for taking the time to consider moving our campus for the betterment of our students' learning." And the next, um, comment is from Imos Ogbowi and says, "Hello, SUSD Board Members. I have been an Aspire employee for just over a year. Uh, but my, my name is Imosi Ogbowi, but my students prefer to call me Ms. Mo. Although my time at Aspire has been relatively short, my expertise, my experience has been extremely beneficial to my professional and personal growth. Thanks to Aspire, I was able to expand and gain meaningful experience in and outside of the classroom. Throughout my role as after-school educator, I have been able to connect with students of all ages here at CHA and increase my communication skills with scholars and their parents. I admire how Aspire puts students' needs first while remaining sensitive to the needs of educators as well. I am grateful for Aspire and the staff at CHA. I became employed through Aspire just a few weeks after moving to the Central Valley Region." And the next public comment is from Claudia Gonzalez and says, "To whom it may concern, I am writing to express my support for the material revision of the Charter for Aspire Public Schools, Capitol Heights Academy in Sacramento. My experience with Capitol Heights Academy has been overwhelmingly positive. I am fortunate to work with an organization that serves over 80% black and Latino students. Capitol Heights Academy is a safe place for many of our students. It is the place where they are valued and encouraged to reach their full potential. Our school not only focuses in academics, but supports our students with social and emotional skills. The fact that this process has taken so long makes me question a lot of things. We need to think about our children and our community. We need to give them what they need and deserve. I support the charter revision for a number of reasons. Sacramento needs an educated workforce with strong ties to our community. The exceptional academic performance of Capitol Heights Academy will help develop the next generation of our city's leaders by influencing them to make their communities what they want it to be." And the next comment is from Valerie Stradling and says, "My name is Valerie Stradling and I am a kindergarten teacher at Aspire Capitol Heights Academy in Sacramento. But more than that, I am also a mom of two Aspire students. I decided to teach at an Aspire school based on the amazing education that they have received there, as well as the school's dedication to creating an environment that promotes, promotes excellence within its students. I wanted to be part of it. When I started at CHA, I was excited to hear about the opportunity for growth that the school was working on. There is a huge need for equality education in this underserved community, and the new facility will allow just that. It will allow us to serve more students, to ed, to educate more students, to foster excellence in more students. Our students deserve that, and it is imperative that we as a community do everything in our power to make sure that this happens. It is because of this that I am in full support of Aspire and all the hard work and dedication that has been done to set its students up for success." And the next public comment is from Chris Orr and says, "I am writing to express strong support of the material revision of the Charter for Aspire Public Schools, Capitol Heights Academy in Sacramento. I challenge the board to think beyond politics and uphold your promise to put students first, all students. In a time where equity and social justice is at the forefront of our county and city, I hope that your decision rests squarely on your values and principles as leaders in education and sincere care for young people. Any denial would strongly question those values and principles. As an organization that serves over 80% black and Latino students, the charter revision request represents a reaffirmation of Aspire's commitment to Sacramento's underserved students and a deepening of their investment into our community. I support the charter revision for a number of reasons. Sacramento needs an educated workforce with strong ties to our community. The exceptional academic performance of Capitol Heights Academy will help develop the next generation of our city's leaders." And the next comment, um, oh, this is also, it's a copy of Chris Orr's and that one is the same. It was just submitted in a different form. Um, the next public comment is from Tamara Clark and says, "The, the ACHA Expanded Learning Program is strongly supportive of the material revision of the Charter for Aspire Public Schools. Capitol Heights Academy is located in a community that needs your support. There has long lived an academic achievement gap in our community due to a lack of resources. This lack of resources translates to a lack of support for our scholars, which impedes their growth. Children are our future and it is only right that every child receives equity. Our curriculum is constantly being changed to reflect this equity, but when it comes to equity and support from our leadership, I do not see this reflected. We need your support with the charter revision request to create equity for our scholars. An organization that serves over 80% black and Latino students, the charter revision request represents a reaffirmation of Aspire's commitment to Sacramento's underserved students and a deepening of their investment into our community. We support the charter revision for a number of reasons." The next public comment is from Gray Chilto or two and says, "I am strongly supportive of the material revision of the Charter for Aspire Public Schools, Capitol Heights Academy in Sacramento. Reflecting on the landscape of our social political world, it is apparent that we need to invest in our scholars of color, especially black scholars. As an organization that serves over 80% black and Latino students, the charter revision request represents a reaffirmation of Aspire's commitment to Sacramento's underserved students and deepening of their investment into our community. It is vital to allow Capitol Heights Academy to have the increased opportunity to allow our black and Latino scholars to succeed with the vision of attending college with a goal to reach into our Sacramento community to serve and make a positive change. The new location will allow Aspire to partner with Sacramento State University, supporting our college-bound mission. Our scholars are the next generation of our city's leaders. It's time to invest in them and Capitol Heights Academy." And the next, um, public comment is from Mariah Ponder and it, um, and it is the same message as the one that I've just read. And the following comment is the same, and it's from Harpreet Chauhan. And so is the next the next public comment, and it's from Marina Dios Dado Corral. And this last one is the same. It's the same, it's the exact same letter, same message, and it's from Victoria George. And that's the final public comment.
Thank you, and so that completes public comments. At this time, we're going to open it up to board member questions and comments. If we can see a show of hands, I see Board Member Minnick.
Thank you, and thanks to all the public comment. I really, really especially appreciated Ms. Williams' description of the experience of her child. And also to the Aspire folks, you know, I'm in agreement. I'm all for you guys being able to be in a better facility. I know Principal Orr, I really appreciated your comment about students having to change schools for one year and then change again and the impact that can have. So I'm definitely in support of getting things moving and getting you guys in a better place for those kids. And I just also wanted to say to Mr. Ramos, I really appreciated how much detail you provided us tonight because, I mean, it was like essentially like a full renewal. Like, we got all the data about the school, and, you know, it might have been more than we needed, but more is always better than less. So I really appreciate the amount of work that must have been. So, and I know I said last time you were up here a couple of months ago that I'm definitely in support of this change because I know that these kids really need it. I know the facility you're in now, and, you know, you've raised really important points. It's no secret that fiscal impact is a factor for us in every single decision that we do now more than ever, right? And so I wanted to just mention a couple of things and then bring up a question for the Aspire folks. Because I see, you know, the fiscal impact that we see in the report is really related to the increase in enrollment, for the enrollment that goes beyond the existing cap. And then I saw the chart that showed that the enrollment isn't projected to go beyond the enrollment cap until... I had written notes, and I put twenty-two, twenty-three, but I think, Mr. Selena, you clarified that it's actually twenty-three, twenty-four, which is after you're up for renewal, which is in 2023. And so, given that the renewal is coming up so soon, you're going to have to come before this board anyway to have that conversation about renewal, I wanted to see how comfortable you are with us amending this material revision so you can do the move, so you can increase the grade level, but keep that existing cap of enrollment that you have now, since you're not going to meet that before you have to come back before this board anyway. So then, you know, we can ensure that there's no fiscal impact to the district between now and the time you come up for renewal, and then, you know, you can reassess, you know, in front of this board in, I guess, two, three years from now. So I wanted to put that as an option because I think, you know, I would be very much in support of this if I knew that there was no immediate fiscal impact on the district.
Board Member Minnick, you're asking a question of...
I guess, yeah, I guess it's a question for Aspire. Is, you know, I know they brought this forward wanting to increase enrollment, but I wanted to see if, knowing that that's not going to happen before the next time they come before this board anyway, if that's a realistic option.
Thank you, Trustee Minnick. That does make sense. I think the reality is that we're in a contract, or we want to get into a contract for a property that we cannot right now because we don't have authorization to be in that physical location. I think I shared this last time when we were here in July. We've been losing about fifteen thousand dollars a month, every month that we've had to extend that offer and acceptance until we got authorization. And so, to this point, we run out of renewal options at the end of this month. And so, if it meant, you know, putting off for now the enrollment increase and saying, okay, we've got to get moving on getting the kids out of our current facility and into the new one, and that allowed construction to start and allowed the renovations to happen. Because we're concerned now that we may not even be able to get the renovations done in time to move in that next year for 21, 22, the way we hoped as well. So we've got all these pressures behind us. So if there were a way that that made it beneficial for the district, and I mean, from the District's Own Financial Report, it actually provides seventy-three thousand additional revenue potentially for the next two years until we breach that 440, then I could see a world where we can make that happen and then just have to know that we'd be all back here again in a couple of years, having a potentially similar conversation, but that the district still holds the cards in that and that we would, you know, hopefully be in a new facility and be able to have a new conversation.
Right, and I guess potentially, I mean, you're going to be back here advocating for the renewal anyway.
No matter what, right?
Yeah, so I guess, and then, you know, I mean, I know other people probably have things to say, but I did, I'd like to put a motion on the table then to amend that revision so that the, so everything stays the same except that the enrollment doesn't exceed the current enrollment cap.
Okay, so we have a motion, and do we have a second on that? And then we're going to continue board member questions and comments. Board Member Pritchett has your hand up.
Yes, I will second that amendment, and then I have a question.
Okay, I know that Board Member Garcia had a question too, but I don't see her fully in the frame. You go ahead.
Perfect, okay, and thank you, Member Minnick, for bringing those issues up, and thank you for that presentation. I can completely relate to going to a school where you don't feel the pride within your school, and, you know, walking through old hallways makes you not want to learn, not want to be there. So I can truly appreciate that. And, you know, I want to thank you for, you know, serving our most vulnerable population in such a positive way. I do have just one question. I know that you guys talked about purchasing services from the district, and I know Mr. Ramos has said that it doesn't really mitigate the impacts, but I would just like to put in the request that those services that you mentioned, janitorial security and landscaping are union employees. That is my only request. And with that, that was my only question.
Yeah, Trustee Pritchett, that would be the case because they're the district's own employees that we...
Yes, thank you. So I want to thank staff, Mr., where are you? Is it Mr. Ramos? I want to thank you and the village that it took to analyze this petition. So I really appreciate all the work. I think you gave us a lot of very good information, and your analysis was solid. So I just wanted to thank you for that. I do want to just get clarity on the motion that is before us in terms of what is, what essentially is left so that we understand what we're voting on. But I did have a question about your enrollment projections because they have been on the decline, and this is for the petitioners. They have been on the decline for several years now, and essentially, you're not even meeting your own, the cap that you have right now. So what plan do you have in place to even get to your current enrollment projections or your targets? I didn't hear a plan. I saw like a rollout of when you would add students, but I just don't know what plan you have.
Thank you so much, Trustee Garcia. That is an essential question and absolutely something that we've been thinking deeply about. As you may or may not know, that the enrollment in the Oak Park area in terms of student enrollment has declined across the board at all schools, including Sac City schools, including kind of increase in businesses, which has been great. It's a great place to go and kind of walking area now, but the number of families that live in the area has certainly decreased. And so that has impacted our enrollment pressures just as it has all the other schools in the area. In addition to the issue that we kind of described earlier about, in essence, being a feeder pattern for other school systems in the area, has been a difficulty for us to talk about early college high school, for example, is a big initiative for us that high school students should be taking college courses through American River College in Sacramento. And yet, the physical distance and the proximity from our high school has made that impossible, and so we end up being a feeder pattern for other charters for the most point. And so, their parents are calculating now, why wouldn't I just start with the system that I'm going to end with? And so that's also created some enrollment pressures. And then I would just say that the problem that we're in is the physical location itself is a deterrent to families. When you drive by the facility and see it and think, do I really want to send my kids there? And you see cars looped around the block because there is no ingress egress parking and traffic flow, it is a deterrent for families to feel like it's a safe and good place to be, especially as more foot traffic and traffic has occurred in the area. So there are several different pressures. I would say the physical space as well. A couple of years back, we found lead in the soil in the back, and so we had to concrete over a part of the playground and use turf, and we had some lead paint in the bathrooms that we had to then tear out some bathrooms and transition one classroom space into an adult space instead. So we lost a classroom for that. So the physical space has actually shrunk in terms of usable space in the time that we've been there as well. And so we just don't feel comfortable putting as many students on the campus as we have in the past. And to your point, there have been kind of negative enrollment pressures there as well. And we believe that would be very different in a new location where, as I say, we're kind of in a peninsula across three district boundaries. We have a great increasing enrollment in the area where we're proposing to move to. So we've noticed that student population demographics have increased in that specific area, and we have the pipeline of our elementary school in San Juan actually has a waitlist that is untapped that we would hopefully get more students for because we'd be in closer proximity from that school as well.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. Go ahead.
I was just going to add, and then we're going to do, obviously, marketing as well in terms of utilizing social media, sending out flyers, once we can actually get out into the public, which has been really difficult this year, to go door-to-door, set up at grocery stores, you know, different news outlets, et cetera. So that's all part of our typical enrollment plan, but we haven't been able to do that because we don't want to over-enroll in a site that we're not going to remain in.
Yeah, but I mean, quite frankly, you haven't enrolled at your capacity. So at any point in time, since you've been authorized. So it's just something I'll have a question on moving forward because it just hasn't appeared that you've ever met your target. So, and I think it's not based on your site because it's probably the site that you were authorized to start with, well, to begin with, right? So I think that's something that you're going to have to address before the board at any future date. I also have a question about, let's see. I have a question about the oversight of the, as an authorizer. I did see that FICMAT, in its report on September fifteenth, that they specifically cited Aspire having issues, a projected deficit spending in each year, starting with twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty first interim, each year of the projection and a negative fund balance by twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. So can you, I tried looking for your budget, but I couldn't find it because I think it's part of the larger Aspire sort of, you know, group. And I just couldn't find your specific charter budget. So can you talk a little bit about that? Maybe the petitioners and also the district staff to find out what, as a district, what they're going to do in terms of monitoring this issue?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start, Trustee Garcia. And this might feel a little bit too inside baseball for a lot of folks on the call, but it's got to be a little bit about charters and the way that we're authorized. So each one of our schools is its own LEA, so our local educational association. And so, Capitol Heights Academy is its own self-contained district on paper. And so, in essence, all the funds flow directly into the school for the ADA, LCAP, et cetera. Aspire Public Schools operates as a supportive management group, so things like HR, IT, all those back office supports, payroll, et cetera, are part of what Aspire brings to the table. So Aspire doesn't have any revenue in and of itself as an organization. We are a nonprofit. We don't have any income per se other than the services that we provide to individual schools. And so, when you described the enrollment pressures at Capitol Heights, that is part of the struggle, even financially, is to be as a sustainable school. It really does need to have a larger enrollment base, not beyond our enrollment authorization. But what we're able to do as a larger organization with thirty-eight schools across California is pool together to be able to interschool borrow as we have schools that are financially doing very well and financially are struggling. They're able to support one another to keep each other up, but that does have to be repaid at some point. And so, when you say you want the fiscal model, our stuff is all public because we're a 501(c)(3), so that would be available for Aspire? Or are you asking for a Capitol Heights budget? Because we do submit that to the district every year, too.
I thought in the report, it's specific to Capitol Heights.
The district ought to have all of that information. That's part of our annual oversight and part of the MOU, I believe.
And maybe Mr. Ramos can speak to that because it's something that is obviously a concerning issue.
Yeah, it's an excellent question. I will have to investigate that. I will have to check in with our fiscal team. But Mr. Selena is correct. They do submit their annual budgets. So I'm sure we have that information, but I will have to ask to bring that back to a future meeting.
But Mr. Ramos, to Member Garcia's point, you did not find, under the criterion for consideration, inability to demonstrate fiscal soundness?
No, that didn't, that didn't come up. But, yeah, no, that didn't come up in our analysis.
We have other board member questions. I'm sorry, Selena, go ahead.
Sorry, just really quick. I think on one thing that you said also, Trustee Garcia, that I think is exactly true is the fact that we are going to be back for renewal in two years, in 2023. This will obviously be part of that conversation as well, and hopefully we'll be able to demonstrate the enrollment numbers that we've discussed once we're able to be in the new facility, too.
Yeah, and I mean, quite frankly, I just think your petition for growth is premature. So I'm just, so I, you know, I know we have a different motion on the table now. So when the time is right, if we can just make sure we get a read on what's before us. But I do have one last question, if possible. And this one is the role of SCOWI, since our district is in the stay-in-recind, and we're no longer necessarily potentially considering growth. So the fiscal impact may not be as present. But I'm just wondering, how does that work? Did district staff talk to SCOWI staff? I'm just wondering how that all plays out. If there's a quick answer for that, that's great. But I just wanted to flag that, too, because it was just something that just caught my attention.
Mr. Selena, Mr. Orr, the relation and conversation with SCOWI?
If that's for us, I believe, and I'm not an expert in this subject at all, so I would be kind of speaking out of turn, but I believe that the county would not even consider hearing or discussing this until this board makes a motion and moves to approve or deny. There is nothing before them yet that they would even discuss. So we had approached Superintendent Gordon to talk to him about it, and he said essentially, until I have something before me, I have nothing to even analyze. So my understanding is that this board needs to make a decision based on the financials of what's before them, and then the county, in their role of oversight, would then have to do a similar analysis to decide if it was somehow fiscally negatively impactful or would have a different outcome for the district. But again, that's me as an outside observer, not, you know, just trying to become a student of the process. So others would probably know way more than me.
I think it was different, though. My question was different. But yes, I think it was maybe that SCOWI, if the board were to approve your material revision for growth, that the county could overturn it because of the fiscal impact, right? They have that authority. So I was just wondering how that kind of plays out. But again, we have a different motion on the table. So I just wanted to be mindful of that, and then I'll let others ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Member Garcia. I do want to, and I don't see... I'm hearing some background feed. I don't know... I don't know who it is.
Vincent Harris, sorry about the fact I can't turn my camera on. My camera went out on Tuesday. But the board members and Ryan, if I could just interject just briefly on a couple of the questions that have been asked. The board member Garcia's question, we have been in contact with SCOE during this whole journey. And then as Mr. Smolina stated, ultimately, right, they they act only in in response to an action by the board this evening. So so that is something that we've been confirming during this journey together. But we have provided briefing updates just so that they know that that this was taking place. The other question on the finances of Aspire, we actually are trying to look that up. So we may be able to give you a response before the the conversation ends this evening. So we are looking that up to provide a response potentially this before we finish this conversation. Excuse me, board members and Ryan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. So I do have a couple of comments, and I I don't see any other hands at the moment, but there may be more. So, you know, I want to begin by saying that, you know, as the board member that represents the Capital Heights Academy, I've actually been to the site. I understand how physically in disrepair it is and what a deterrent it is to community members for attending the school. I think I've shared before, one of my daughter's best friends was a Capital Heights scholar, and it was inadequacies of facilities in large part that led her mother to choose another school after being awarded the WaySmart Capital Heights Academy Scholar of the Year a couple of years ago. You know, I have very much consistent with my commitment to making sure that more brown and black students succeed, appreciated the strong both community connections of Capital Heights Academy, but also the connections to SAC State and other institutions of higher learning, because the entire mission is to promote a college-going culture at a very young age for those students. I'm also very much aware of this dynamic that, you know, the first data set analyzed Capital Heights Academy against the district as a whole and not Oak Park. And you are outperforming the vast majority of our Oak Park schools. And this is an important point because as parents, as community members in Oak Park, we want to make sure, in particular, parents of Black and Brown students, that we are sending them to schools that are going to give them a pathway to college and good careers. And you're doing that for students in our community. Now, I will also say that as a fiscal steward to our community, I was gravely concerned with the financial analysis around a 600 enrollment number. We are having to grapple with what I think are going to be some very brutal cuts in the coming weeks and months in an effort to avoid state receivership. And so while I very much believe in equity in facilities and access to excellent educational programs, I am not comfortable with losing potentially a million and a half dollars down the line. And so the amended motion that board member Minnick has brought before us to honor the original charter cap of 440 students and authorize the move is, I believe, absolutely the right thing to do, both to recognize that our students deserve facilities adequacy, that there are strong partnerships and a strong educational program in place, and that we have already authorized that charter number. And so this is not about looking at expansion at this moment. I believe the board will have to have a very difficult conversation and debate about that two years from now. But right now, this is about saying Black and Brown students, in large part that are served and that have seen the benefit of this program, deserve to go to a school facility that is free from asbestos, that has adequate playgrounds and access to SAC State and the partnership that is being offered to grow our city's future scholars. And for that reason, I'm strongly in support of the amended motion, if you are in agreement. Do we have any other questions or comments from board members? Board member Murawski?
Thanks so much. Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. First, I I wanted to clarify what the motion is on the table. I think I understand it, but I I really need it to be clarified because I think it, you know, it it has implications that will either allow or constrain some of our future decisions, I believe. So if you can, I don't know, member Minnick, if you can restate the motion.
And Mr. Behrens, you're not on camera. I think it would be very helpful to have you as well.
Yes. I can articulate the legalese if you wish. And I think capture what board member Minnick is moving. I think the motion is that the petition for material revision of the Charter for Aspire Capital Heights Academy be approved on condition that the enrollment shall not exceed a maximum of 440 students and that the resolution before you, which is number 3158, is amended to read, quote, "Be it further resolved that the petition is hereby approved on condition that the enrollment shall not exceed a maximum of 440 students," close quote. That would replace the current resolution language before you, which states, "Be it further resolved that the petition is hereby approved." So if that is the motion, I will defer to board member Minnick if that is, and that clarifies what is before you as a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Behrens. Yes, that's that that was the that was what I had suggested.
And Mr. Behrens, do we have to have the language per the original petition somewhere within that motion?
Well, I'll defer to.
The enrollment cap per the originally approved petition.
Right, yeah. Well, the petition would only be approved on condition that the enrollment not exceed the 440 students. And that also means that your resolution is similarly amended. That's the condition. You have Mr. Sklar, I think, also. I think I'd like to defer to him if there is anything else that should be stated. But that is what I consider to be the motion. The petition granted on the condition that the amount of the student enrollment not exceed 440 students, that the resolution before you articulate the same, and if Mr. Sklar wishes to weigh in, or Mr. Ramos, if there's anything else. But I think that is it. That captures what is before you.
Correct, Mr. Behrens. And this is this is Ed Sklar, also of LaZano Smith. Just to clarify, there were three parts to this, so everyone's on the same page, three parts to this petition for material revision. The first part was the authorization to move the location to the new facility. The second part was to add on operational grades, six through eight, for the operation of this charter school. And then the third part of that was to eventually roll out to 600, an enrollment of 600 students. So with this motion, the first two parts of the amendment remain, which is to move the location and roll out the the grade six through eight. So this would be a go from a K5 school to a K8 school. And what would be off the table, so to speak, would be the the growth of to 600 students. That, it sounds like, is what will be discussed at the time when the this petition is up for renewal. And at that time, while, at that time, this board, since it will be, at that time, will be a material revision to add, to go from 440 to 600 students, this 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 board will be able to consider both the, well, will be able to consider the fiscal impact of moving from 440 students to 600 students. If it was a pure renewal, if you had already given the permission to for Aspire to have 600 students, then you would not be able to consider that at the time of their renewal. Now that you are, now that you are cutting off that piece of the amendment, so to speak, so that they are not increasing their enrollment from what is currently allowed at 440 students, then it will be a material revision and a renewal at the same time. And the law allows this board that at that time to consider the fiscal impacts of the increase to 600 students, if that's their ask.
Thank you for further clarifying. For board members who have not made comments or questions, at least I think you had one other.
Yeah, I'm I'm still trying to understand that, Mr. Sklar. Thank you for that. Are you saying that there is no fiscal impact or we we cannot consider a fiscal impact based on the current motion because the the number, number of students is not increasing?
But my, the the staff's analysis was the the fiscal, there there does not seem to be any fiscal impact if they are remaining at 440 students or if their operational enrollment is 440 students. So there there is no fiscal, you can consider that, you can consider fiscal impacts when you are looking at a material, a petition for material revision like you have in front of you right now. However, if you, I don't know that there is a fiscal impact if they're not looking to increase their enrollment at this time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Can I ask, can I ask, Mr. Selena? My my impression is that the the move to the school, the new building, is supportable from a financial perspective with the increase, increase in number of students and and not without an increase in number of students. So I'm, I'm trying to understand what we're doing here today and whether it seems to me like we're we're, you know, considering approving, kind of going halfway there. But then I think we we won't really be able to make a meaningful discussion, you know, have a meaningful choice once we already allowed grades, you know, six, seven, and eight, and already have the building move and to for financial viability, would need to increase the enrollment. So I I'm, you know, and and I understand, you know, that we're talking about, okay, this is down the line, but it seems to me like it's just sort of laying out a path that we'll have to follow. And also, you know, in the out years, the fiscal impact in those very years that we're so concerned about will be realized.
Thank you so much, trustee Murawski. We we did, we went back and we've been modeling with the facility and the improvement costs that have to take place because those are real costs. We, you know, the building costs with the building costs. But we looked at staffing models around going K8 and the idea of, you know, students matriculating up from fifth to sixth to seventh and only having the one grade year at a time and what staffing is. And we do believe it's actually a fiscally sustainable model.
At what, at what level?
At the, at the, at our current enrollment authorization.
Okay. But that, but that would have to include expanding the number of grades.
Correct. That's that's part of the growth, you know, in terms of keeping those kids. That's not new students. That's just having the fifth graders matriculate to sixth, sixth graders matriculate into seventh. So yes, that's how we would accomplish the growing to the grade levels would be by having those students matriculate up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the the clarification. I mean, I'm very sympathetic to the, the, you know, children and families and and staff that are dealing with the the facilities. I guess just a overall comment of a couple of things that I think we need to be looking at as board members. You know, I think we need to look at the big picture. I think that's what we're here for, is to look at the big picture of, you know, what is social justice? What is equity? Who is being served? And is it, you know, a small slice of students who are choosing to go to a particular school? Or are we, you know, making decisions as we're charged with on behalf of, of, you know, allowing the entire district to to thrive? I I think we just need a broader look at also, you know, this is talking about a primary and middle, I think it's a really challenging environment, you know, for enrollment just across charters, across the district. And I I am just having a hard time wrapping my head around, you know, at a time where we have tremendous excess capacity in our, in our system, you know, like essentially encouraging the growth, you know, outside of our system of students who could potentially be served by SAC City. So those are, those are kind of some of my, my considerations here. I I do want to ask, just clarify also, Mr. Ramos, is there a staff staff recommendation on this item? No.
We can't hear you. You're muted. You're muted, Mr. Ramos.
Go ahead, mister.
We're president Ryan and board Murawski. This is Vincent Harris. I mean, typically, staff has been our practice is to present, whether it's for charter renewal or in this case, material revision, has been simply to present the facts as as defined so that the board is able to make an informed decision. Ultimately, all the things discussed here make the ultimate decision with some complexity. But, you know, your conversation is meant, we're meant to inform your conversation so that you have no staff bias in making ultimately the final decision.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yes. Sorry that I was muted, but Mr. Harris has eloquently stated our position with regards to our practice with regards to bringing this to the board. But we do understand the difficulty of making this decision, so.
I appreciate member Murawski's comments. I think what's really important to note here is this is not a new petition. We are not approving a new charter. This is a material revision. And with the amendments that are being proposed by board member Minnick, we are asking to operate under the current enrollment cap. And if we look at the original petition, it actually did have a greater grade offering than ended up being realized as well. So I think this question is really about the facility more than anything else and the equity in the facilities. Now, I do think this bigger question about how do we make sure that students have excellent access to education irrespective of their zip code, their racial ethnicity, their income level, district-wide is a huge one. And we have to recognize for the charters that we have already authored, we have a responsibility to make sure that those children are successful and that we are meeting their needs. And we've seen that within this model. Do we have any final questions from board members who have not spoken yet? Okay, we don't. So it looks like we have a motion and a second.
I have a question. Sorry. Okay. Garcia, thank you. I just need to get clarity on, on the, on the motion because I, I'm concerned that it's still going to be tied to grade six, seven, and eight, and that somehow that is going to force some sort of decision when the charter comes up for renewal in two years. So so maybe, where's the attorney from? I don't see him. Oh, Ed. Mr. Sklar, can can you talk a little bit more about, about that nuance? Because, because I, I, I interpreted the the motion to mean that it were only considering the relocation of the charter from its current location to the location on Folsom without expanding not only number of students, but also the grades.
No, the the, my, my understanding of this motion is it would include increasing the operational grades, so increasing it to six, seven, and eight. And Mr., and I think that's probably Mr. Minnick's understanding as well.
Yeah, that was correct because the, because the fiscal impact is 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 affected by the number of students, not the grades of the students.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay. Thank you, board member Garcia. So we have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote, our student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Ryan?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Yes.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
No.
Member Garcia?
No.
Member Vang?
No.
Member Wu?
Yes.
Four, three.
We have a motion that carries, thank you very much. Item number 10.2, the Community Advisory Committee for the renaming of Kit Carson International Academy.
Good evening, President Ryan, Board Members, Superintendent Aguilar. I'm here to present the district's proposed school site renaming process for Sutter, Kit Carson, and Peter Burnett. Ask the board to approve the creation of an ad hoc community advisory committee to rename the schools and to seek appointments from each board member for that committee. As stated last month, these three names were found to be the most problematic school site names within the district in terms of representing racism, oppression, and exclusion of others. The naming process is closely linked to the district's core value and guiding principle. Every sys, every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it gets, and this is true in the shadow of the school site names that may represent oppression to others. Our research and the research of others shows that these three sites are named after such oppressive individuals. Peter Burnett created some of the West's first exclusionary laws aimed towards Black and Chinese Americans, and all three individuals led widely documented extermination campaigns. Next slide. This process is most definitely tied to dismantling racism within our system and within the broader community. Last time I spoke about the California Education Code, Section 221.2, that spoke directly to this issue. Tonight, I wanted to focus a little more on the policy discussion on the next slide. Again, there are more than three sites within the district that may qualify for name change. However, we are focused on these three sites to begin with because of the extreme egregious nature of those individuals. We want to allow the community to properly process and develop the appropriate recommendations for the board. SUSD Board Policy states that the governing board shall name schools or individual buildings in recognition of, one, individuals living or deceased who have made outstanding contributions to the county or community; two, individuals living or deceased who have made contributions of state, national, or worldwide significance; three, the geographic area in which the school or building is located. The policy further states the board encourages community participation in the process of selecting names. A citizen advisory committee shall be appointed to review name suggestions and submit recommendations for the board's consideration. The renaming of existing school sites or major facilities shall occur only under extraordinary circumstances and after thorough study. The policy concludes by outlining memorials by stating, upon request, the board shall consider naming buildings, parts of buildings, or athletic fields in honor of the contributions of students, staff members, and community members who have been deceased for at least a year. That policy was last revised in November 2001. As a comparison, facility staff looked at other district policies regarding the naming of sites and found Long Beach to provide a strong example. I have hyperlinked it in this presentation and encourage community members and board members to look at it at their leisure on the board webpage. But today, I just wanted to outline a few things. Long Beach, please back up one slide still. Thank you. Long Beach, USD's policy begins, begins much in the same way as ours, but they also outline that the governing body may name schools in recognition of an idea, concept, or purpose that inspires others. I also wonder if another positive addition to the policy may be to name it after inanimate objects such as flowers or flora and fauna. The Long Beach policy also outlines that the superintendent, it's the superintendent's responsibility to develop and appoint individuals to a school naming advisory committee, and each appointee will serve a two-year term. The makeup of the advisory committee shall include an outlined list of individuals, including at least half of the members from community-based organizations, a rep from the local area's historical community, as well as parents, students, staff, and labor partners. The policy outlines the role of the committee as reviewing all school names and bringing forward a list of sites for possible name changes for the board's review. Afterwards, the committee would focus on any names the board deemed and would come back with proposed name changes for the board's consideration. Any name changes being brought to the Long Beach Board at that time would first be shared through a public hearing and then would be acted upon in a subsequent meeting. I do want to note that during, thank you. During the September presentation on this topic, a board member pointed, pointed out that renaming an existing school or major facility shall occur only under extraordinary circumstances and after thorough study as outlined in the SUSD policy. The question was asked about what that means and what that looks like. So previously, within the district, extraordinary circumstances often meant that something undesirable came to light that involved the individual for which a school name was named after. However, we've also renamed school sites because their curriculum focus had changed or something similar. In this case, concerns with these individuals has come to bear, these individuals meaning Sutter, Kit Carson, and Peter Burnett, in addition to the current social climate of today, which has created an opportunity to evaluate these names. As far as the thorough study that has been completed by the Facilities Department staff, community members, and in many ways, the general public. We also plan to continue that thorough study throughout the next few months in this committee structure before bringing this item back to the board for a public hearing in the spring. Next slide. So tonight, staff seek the board's approval of an ad hoc community advisory committee to rename schools and receive one appointment from each board member and three appointments from the student board member. The superintendent's appointments will be announced in the coming days. Following this meeting, the committee announcement will go out to families next week. The announcement will include a survey to the broader community in order to gain their input. It will also identify the superintendent's selections at that time. Staff will connect with each committee member to confirm meeting dates and times, as well as answer any questions they may have. Meetings will be held throughout the winter, and we will come back to the board next spring for a public hearing on this item. Next slide. Here are the initially proposed committee meeting dates. The intent is to focus on one specific school site during each of the three initial larger committee meetings. Each meeting will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., where we will develop and review group norms, outline the scope and framing for the meeting, hear about the specific individual, the specific individuals that the sites are named after from a local historical community member, review cost implications for the name change in greater detail, and distill proposed name changes ideas through a group process. Next slide. In addition to, for central staff, we will have these following individuals on the committee. The Sutter Principal, Kristen Tahara Martin. Sutter Teacher, appointed by the principal, Michael Barad, Baradet. Peter Burnett Principal, Manuel Wezo. Burnett Instructional Aid, appointed by the principal, Valerie Chipman. Kit Carson Principal, Santiago Chapa. And Kit Carson IB Coordinator, appointed by the principal, Sean De, Deale Sandro. Next slide, thank you. We will also have the following individuals joining the committee who are appointed by the Youth Development Department. Dalton Brown, Yamonie Hedrick, and Susan Morla. Next slide, thank you. Here are the district staff participating in this effort as well. Elna Hankert from Facilities, Dr. Kimberly Mackey, Instructional Assistant Superintendent, myself, and Ms. Tara Galagos from Communications. Next slide, thank you. I would like to ask the board now to approve the creation of an ad hoc advisory committee to rename school sites, schools after any questions or comments. Following that action, I'd like to ask each individual board member to share the name of their appointee to the committee. Afterwards, we will proceed with the rest of the next steps as previously outlined in this presentation. Next slide. And with that, any questions?
We're going to take public comments on this item before board member questions. Do we have any public comments on this item, Ann?
Yes, President Ryan, we have three public comments. The first is from Junior Gores and says, Superintendent Aguilar, President Ryan, and esteemed board members, thank you for allowing me to make a quick comment this evening. Bravo, SUSD. Thank you for supporting many of the district's parent values in renaming these three schools. The fundamentals in building values is so critical even in the name of the buildings our children will navigate in building their life skills. Dignity and respect for the human race and for people is something we must always work to achieve. I applaud SUSD in taking a stand and attempting to right the wrongs of the past. If the district applies this approach to simple problem solving, all through the district in any situation, we can do anything. I can see a future of positive relationships with its partners. I can see the district being a beacon for education in the state, and I can see the district reversing its financial woes. Thank you for being proactive and doing what's right. The next comment is from Amanda Connolly and says, "Parents, we have a, we have a financial crisis, shut down schools, and distance education methods that aren't meeting anyone's actual needs. This bit of political theater that will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars needs to wait until after the basics of effectively educating our kids are handled. I don't know who any of these schools are named after. They are long gone, and whatever they did, they can't hurt anyone today. So let's stop pretending we're doing things that matter and actually do the things that matter. Get our kids back in class, say no more blank texts to the SCTA, and stop giving the district money when we aren't receiving what we've been paying for since even before the shutdown. No more money for unaccountable and/or unelected government entities." Thank you. And then the last public comment is from Janice Goosey and says, "With regard to the creation of a 27-member advisory committee to rename three schools in the district and the expenditure of future funds of between $100,000 and $150,000 per site for refurbishment in connection with the renaming, I want to register my objections to the investment of time and money in consideration of this request. No doubt, there may be good reasons to believe that the three individuals associated with these schools are not people we might want to honor in 2020, but there may be other ways of addressing this that don't divert precious funds from the district needed to educate our children. In fact, the names of these schools can provide a, quote, 'teachable moment,' end quote, in the schools to educate students and facilitate discussion. Furthermore, at least one of these names, Sutter, has come to be synonymous with Sacramento in many ways and refers to much more than just John Sutter. Students need to know about the good, bad, and the ugly, and how the definitions of those terms evolve over time. Please don't waste this money that could be so better used in the classroom." That's the last public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Moretti. At this time, we will take brief questions from board members, if we have any. Board Member Pritchett, then Board Member Morowski.
Mr. Browning, can you tell me if these committee meetings will be open to the public?
So, the committee meetings were going to be, they can definitely be open to the public. It would be conducted by committee members, though, so there would be an option for them to view.
So much like this board meeting.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Morowski?
Thank you, just a couple of questions and clarifications. So, on, on the funding piece, can you clarify, well, actually, let me back up. Can you clarify what we are being asked to approve today? Just so we're, we're clear on, you know, what's today versus in the future?
Yeah, so this is a two-fold request. The first would be board action that would create an ad hoc community advisory committee to rename Sutter, Peter Burnett, and Kit Carson. And what that action would do would be create a committee to come together, work on developing recommendations that would then come back to the board later this spring for the board to decide if and a name change is appropriate. And if a name change is appropriate, what that name change would be based on those recommendations. The board does not have to act on any of those recommendations at that time.
Okay, so it's not a two-fold request for tonight, it's a two-step process?
Yeah, sorry, Member Morowski. The second part of tonight's action would be gaining the appointee names from each individual board member.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, and we're not, you know, approving any expenditures of money today. And I just do want to clarify for, for the public that, like, where the, where the dollars are expected to come from and that they're not expected to come out of general operating funds. Can you clarify that for us, Nathaniel?
I, I can't at this time, but I can when we bring forward a recommendation with more detail.
Okay, well, I would just take, take that as a request because, you know, obviously, our district is not in the position to support this with general operating funds. And so, you know, if there are bond funds available, if we can do fundraising around this effort, you know, I think we just need to look elsewhere from, from general operating funds for this effort. So that's, that's one piece. Yeah, I'm really glad to see there is significant representation from our native communities on the, you know, with the appointees so far. So, I think, I think that's it. I just wanted to clarify on the funding piece, thank you. You know what, there was one more thing, I'm sorry. I, I did want to mention, you know, just going back to a prior board meeting where I, I really wanted us to have a resolution or some documentation of, you know, what, why this name change was taken, what these individuals did. It was just some kind of historical record. And so I just wanted to clarify also that that is going to be brought back to us with the recommendations and that the committee is going to also document the reasons for the name change.
Okay, can, Member Morowski, can you please clarify the request just to make sure it's clear?
When we, when we discussed this in a prior meeting, I requested there be some documentation. You know, I noticed that the lack of documentation of, you know, who was Peter Burnett? What actions are we objecting to, et cetera? So I really think that, you know, that type of documentation is important for the historical record, and so everyone understands, you know, not just like using adjectives to describe their lives or actions, but like the specific things that, that, you know, that our society finds objectionable. I mean, I just really think that's an important thing to, to document. So I am requesting that the recommendations brought, bringing, bringing back the recommendations, we will also bring back a resolution that documents, you know, the historical facts that we find objectionable about honoring these individuals with, with a name of a school.
Okay, thank you.
Is that doable and clear?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, I will, is it, is that a, I'm sorry, do we need a motion on?
We do.
Creation of a committee? I'm happy to move it, thank you.
I'll sign. Okay, we have a motion and a second, but it looks like we have one other board member comment, Board Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss something. What was the point of presenting the Long Beach resolution? Are you suggesting that we, this is food for thought for us in terms of how we'd like to change our resolution or policy moving forward?
Yeah, it was previously requested by a board member at the September 3 presentation to research and find a best practice, a board policy to bring forward and share. And so that was just exactly what we did, outlined a similar policy in many ways, but also slightly different as well.
Oh, okay, so, okay, so I guess I, I'm still trying to figure out if we're going to see some- Okay, so I guess I'm still trying to figure out if we're going to see some recommended changes to our own policy based on this other policy or best practice. So I don't know if something's going to come back to us or if the Citizens Advisory Committee is going to make that recommendation, how we may update our policy to reflect maybe today's time or something. And I... Go ahead.
Yeah, so I would defer to the superintendent and board for that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, Member Garcia. I think that we should, during the process, make sure that we are assessing where we can make improvements to our own board policies around renaming and certainly look to Long Beaches, but also others. I know, for example, other districts, as part of their policies, don't name schools for anyone that is still alive. So we can continue on a parallel track and continue to bring back suggested changes to our current policy by looking at not just Long Beaches, but others as well as the committee is doing its work.
Okay, I think that, you know, if we're going to go down this path of looking at other policies and maybe take the opportunity to make improvements to our own, but I appreciate also the future clarity on where the funds are going to come from to support some of these changes. I think that's important to identify and clarify for our communities. And then I did have, at some point, I think there was an inquiry about... Because I know I heard from a couple of constituents about mascots, right? Looking at our school mascots and potentially including them in this conversation. The mascots that were highlighted for me are not necessarily, you know, connected to these three sites that have been identified for renaming, but I just wanted to ask, where does that fit into this conversation?
Yeah, so the previous presentation on September 3 and then today is focused right now on these three sites because we found that they were the most concerning in order to systematically work through the potential log of school site names and mascots that we need to address. So, for example, a mascot at a site may be problematic that we need to address, but there are also other sites that potentially have problematic names like Mark Twain, for example. So there are a number of sites that could potentially be reviewed for their mascots and names after this. I think pulling in more than three would prolong the process and make the process much more difficult with adding on those extra layers. But that's not outside the realm of possibility after we come back with this first round.
Okay, I just didn't want it to get lost in the mix. So if it's in the hopper for a future conversation, then that's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. So, Mr. Browning, I think what you've heard, because we talked about this when we first tackled this subject, is that we have a strong interest in ensuring that we can use our bond dollars to make the necessary changes to billboards, signage, et cetera, associated with the name changes. That was how we were able to both reconcile that this is absolutely the right thing to do from the standpoint of racial equity and within our fiscal constraints could be done. So making sure that we have that clarified. And then I think Nathaniel, just looking at what a Tier Two, second phase of addressing some of the mascots and other imagery problems, as we've heard consistently about that across the district, would be helpful. Even if it just means that we're showing our community that the timeline is next year, we will, after we've wrapped up this first phase of this work, be tackling these other critical items. So I would hope that we can bring that back, too. So with that, this is an action item. Will we be naming our advisory members at this point as part of the action, or are we just voting?
I would ask Mr. Behrens to jump in here as well, but my understanding is that you would take action to create the committee, and then from there, I can ask each individual board member who their appointee is. Is that correct, Mr. Behrens?
You can do that under B. If you don't have your appointees, they can be made at a point in time. So in approving this as a roll call vote, you can do both A and B with the understanding that B may be deferred if you don't have all your appointees at this point in time. I don't know if you want a deadline or if you need one, Nathaniel, but you don't have to have your appointees tonight.
So I think all of us submitted appointees, with the exception of one board member. Mr. Browning, I'll go ahead and take your cue if you would like that announcement made tonight or if you would like a post at a later time.
If possible, I would love to receive any nominees that you do have tonight because we are trying to ramp this up, ramp this up quickly.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and have the roll call vote. We'll then move to just a roll call of appointees that will be named by those of us who have already identified those appointees. Board Member Pritchett.
It looks like we lost Member Wu. Nathaniel, do you have his appointee name?
Yes, I can work on pulling it up here, one second.
Okay, so do we have a motion to establish the Community Advisory Committee for the renaming of three schools? Kit Carson, Sutter Middle, and Peter Burnett Elementary School?
I'm moved.
Do you have a second? It looks like we had a motion by Member Murawski, a second by Board Member Pritchett, since he kind of overlapped. And do we have a student preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Board Member Sheik. Roll call vote.
Member Ryan?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Member Wu, I think, has dropped off. Can I have his appointee name, Nathaniel, if you don't have it?
Okay, Mr. Browning, why don't you call by Board Member Area for the appointee?
Area one?
My appointee is Ms. Janine Gaines. She is a mother alum of Peter Burnett Sutter Middle School, Anne McClatchy, and she is currently Communications Manager at the Sacramento Native American Health Center and an enrolled member of the Citizen Potawatomi Nation of Oklahoma. Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
Thank you. Area two?
Yes, so Stephanie Taylor. She is a local artist and writer, is a native of Sacramento, and has a long history in our community as an active participant. And you can see her amazing art throughout the entire city of Sacramento.
Thank you. Area three?
My appointee is Ms. Allison Moore Alexander. And many of you know her through the district as being a very involved parent.
Thank you. Area four?
All right, I am excited to appoint Peter Burnett Elementary School active parent Julia Sanchez.
Thank you. Area five?
I don't, I haven't decided on my appointee yet, Nathaniel, so I'll forward that to you.
Perfect, thank you. I believe trustee Wu would like to appoint Junior Goris, is that...
That's who I have, yes. He says he's a father at MLK.
Perfect. And area seven?
I will be appointing Emily Mizakami, who, as you know, started a petition with more than 1,500 signatures to see this move happen. Is also a very active parent and involved with the Japanese-American community as well as having children in Sutter Middle School.
And trustee Sheik has three appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Thank you for your presentation. And also thank you for starting with these three schools, just because they are the most egregious examples. I'm seeing districts across the street sort of grapple with the renaming issue and perhaps casting too wide of a net. So I'm really glad we're starting with these three really defined examples. I also want to thank Ms. Christina Prairie Chicken Narvez, who works with our American Indian Education Program, who helped me identify two of my appointments tonight. And those appointments are Lena McGurk, she's a ninth grader at Hiram Johnson, and Victoria Goodwin, who's a senior at John F. Kennedy High School. I'll also be appointing myself.
Thank you kindly. And with that, any more questions or comments?
And Superintendent Aguilar, you will be reserving your appointments for a later date, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, with that, we're moving...
Oh, just one question. Nathaniel, you'll share the schedule, right? The expectations with all our appointees. And to the extent that there's, for whatever reason, they can't commit to it, you'll let us know in case we need to, I don't know, figure something out. I think it's an exciting opportunity for many of our appointees, but I just wanted to be mindful that the schedule may not work for some, so...
Yeah, so I will be reaching out to the appointees early next week and confirming that those dates and times work. And if there's any conflicts, try our best to work through those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Browning. We appreciate your efforts on this. Moving on to item 11.0, the consent agenda. We have a couple amendments to the consent agenda. Before we ask for a motion and approval of the consent agenda, first, I'm going to go ahead and pull off 11.1G. This has been a discussion among several board members as well as community members to move to pull off the consent agenda, the approval for requests for waiver of a budget review committee, so that we have an opportunity at the next board meeting to have a discussion on the merits and potential drawbacks of either a budget review committee or the existing structure with SCOE oversight. And so we'll be bringing that back to the next board meeting. Board member, sorry, Superintendent Aguilar, I know that you also had an adjustment.
Yes, but I think that it is more appropriate to defer to our board on that related to 11.1A.
Okay, Board Member Vang?
Thank you, President Ryan. I want to take this opportunity to actually request the board to pull item 11.1A, in particular to regarding Measure Q Funds for Luther Burbank, around the $200,000. Today, I think we heard from one of our teachers, one of our lead science teacher at the site level during public comment about some concerns. I also had an opportunity today to speak with staff directly. And after speaking with staff, I believe that it merits further conversation. I also had an opportunity to speak briefly with the superintendent before our board meeting. And I know he's also interested in unpacking the situation and some of the concerns raised at the site level. And so I want to take this opportunity, we can pull that agenda. I want to make sure that we have ample time as a district, along with school site staff, to have opportunity to kind of work through some of the concerns that some of our teachers have at the site level to ensure that we, you know, can create a conducive learning, a student learning environment. So we can pull that item, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Board Member Vang. So with those amendments, do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Second, student preferential vote?
Yes, on all open session items.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call vote on this?
President, just the Member Ryan, sorry.
Yes.
Member Pritchett?
Yes.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Okay, it looks like the motion carries with Board Member Wu absent at this time. Item 12... Oh, go ahead.
President Ryan, I did want to mention, on this action just taken, it would be helpful, given the staff recommendation made as part of consent, if the board could send any questions that you might have to prepare for a discussion around the item that was pulled related to the Budget Review Committee. Superintendent Gordon is on the line as well. So it would be helpful just to make sure that we have all the questions that need to be addressed in order to be prepared to respond to our board. We may also come back sooner than the next board meeting. There is a deadline that is very close to that in which we have to provide notice to CDE if that's the decision that is made. So I would just ask that you provide us with some of the questions, given the recommendation in consent.
Okay, so, Board members, please make sure that those questions are directed not to the entire board as a whole, to avoid Brown Act violation, that you are directing those questions to the superintendent prior to our next board meeting. Okay, thank you, Superintendent. I appreciate that clarification.
Ryan, we do have four written comments on the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So the first comment is from Shanna Just and says, "My name is Shanna Just, and I am a science teacher at Luther Burbank High School. I am speaking to an item on the consent agenda. Item 11.1A staples R.21-01390, $221,170, Measure Q Funds. You should have received a detailed email from me on 10/14/20 regarding this issue as I knew my time during public comment would be limited. I am urging you not to approve the proposed purchase of furniture for Burbank Science classrooms. Neither the Burbank Science teachers nor the site administration supports this purchase. This is not what we, as a site, have spent since September 21 of 2017 working on. This is a plan being pushed through by facilities over the loud and most serious objections of Burbank High School. Moving forward with this furniture purchase will result in millions of taxpayer dollars having been spent only to result in Burbank having science classrooms that, while newer and prettier, are less effective and less safe as both instructional and lab spaces." Thank you, Shanna Just. And the next comment is from Arthur Cisneros and says, "My comment is actually for 11.1A. There is a proposal being put forth to allocate funds to purchase furniture for science rooms at Luther Burbank. The district facilities and the furniture vendor are explicitly ignoring the plans put forth by our school site that still falls into our site's funding. Every plan they put forth utilizes the same tables and stools that we've said on multiple occasions will not be the best use for our classrooms. If we're purchasing new furniture for our classrooms, we need furniture that is going to do what we want, not furniture that we have to make work for us. Every science teacher on our staff has agreed for a furniture plan that includes different-sized desks for labs and a set of table desks with normal chairs for instruction. Our admin team agrees with us. Our district facilities partnered with the architects and the furniture reps, who are all disconnected from real-life issues around teaching in the classroom, keep updating their plans by using the same exact furniture placed in different orientations in the physical classroom. Their proposed furniture, somewhere between 18 and 20 72-inch tables with stools for seating, because the tables are tall, does not work for us for reasons many of us have laid out extensively in separate emails. The only reason that we've heard from them about using these furniture items is that it's what other schools have done. That is not, in my opinion, a good reason to move forward with it. We are expected in education to structure all of our lessons and specific activities to work for our students. The same should be true for the physical space each school is teaching in. We should be able to buy furniture that works for us, not furniture that we have to make work." And the next comment is from Daniel Conway and says, "I would ask that this item be removed from the consent calendar. This would be the third year in a row that SCUSD would waive the use of the Budget Review Committee, but the district..." the use of the Budget Review Committee, but the district's financial situation has continued to deteriorate. While I do not think the district needs another third-party analysis to sit on a shelf and be ignored or questioned, a Budget Review Committee seems like an opportunity to appoint three individuals who could be credible to your labor partners and the broader community to come up with actionable recommendations to address the budget deficit. At the very least, this topic seems worthy of a public discussion by the elected board members rather than a rubber stamp on the consent calendar. With the list of challenges and our district growing, continuing to grow, it's time for our leaders to confront these issues and make the hard choices that they were elected to make. Let's accept that the next few years will be very challenging in our district, but we must come together to create the best possible school system for our students, because that's what our kids deserve." And the last comment is from Allison French-Tubo and says, "Please remove item 11.1G regarding a budget committee from consent agenda and give it the discussion it deserves." And that's the final comment.
Thank you. And I know that we have Superintendent Gordon on the line with us as well as his CBO. And I, and I want to be mindful that he's been with us this evening in anticipation of addressing item 11.1G. So Superintendent Gordon, if you or your staff want to make a few comments in response to public comment, recognizing that for transparency's sake and to have a thorough analysis of both the benefits and potential drawbacks of either of the two potential courses of action at the next board meeting, we're happy to hear from you for, for a few minutes. I see Superintendent Gordon's gone off mute and I'm not hearing. Okay.
I think, I think we were assuming it would be discussed and disposed of this evening, so not to extend your meeting any longer, I suppose, I suppose we should wait until you, you have it up for discussion next time. It's, it's, it's not something, it's not something that we feel is necessary or would add anything to all of the reviews and analyses that you've had already. There also is a very tight timeline and it's not something that's been used in the past very often at all or to advantage. And Nick Schweitzer, who is our incoming CEO to replace Tammy Sanchez, worked in the Department of Education for a number of years and was privy to the discussions about the Budget Review Committee. He's with us tonight. And I might give him a moment to comment on it. Nick?
Sure, thank you, Superintendent Gordon. Yeah, just, just, so, just a little bit of context. Of course, you know, a budget, as the superintendent mentioned, budget review committees are fairly rarely used. Generally, it's, it's preferable for a, a district governing board to work with the district administration and, and the county office to, you know, find solutions to a budget, to a budget issue rather than, you know, spend the, the time, effort and, and the cost of a, of a budget review committee. In my experience, you know, when, the one budget review committee that was done or that has been done, to my knowledge, in recent years, it really, you know, they, the, the, the district ended up coming to resolution on its, on its budget issues before the, before the committee could even really complete its work anyway. So as the superintendent mentioned, it's, it's not something that's, that's, you know, commonly used in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I look forward to having a more detailed conversation at our next board meeting. Thank you, Superintendent Gordon, for your time this evening as well. My apologies that you ended up being with us later than had anticipated, but we appreciate, as always, your willingness to provide counsel and, and your accessibility. Item 12.0, Business and Financial Information Reports, Receive Information 12.1. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, no public comment.
Item 13.0, Future Board Meeting Dates and Locations. Our next board meeting will be held on November 5th. Also, virtual setting with our closed session beginning at 4:30, our open session at 6:00 PM. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Stay healthy and safe.